Good evening.
Good evening.
We would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton. Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primorosa.
Here.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to our agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to move right into announcements and presentations. First, we have the legislative update by Matt Forrest from Ballard Partners. Matt, if you could come on up. Thank you so much. Good to see you.
It's a pleasure to be seen. For the record, Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners, representing the city of Palm Beach Gardens. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. It's a pleasure to kick off your meeting. We are recently back from the wrap-up of legislative session, and so we thought it was a good time for me to come present to you guys, give you a real, real, brief overview from the very top of some of the things that happened in Tallahassee, and also just get a chance to let you guys know that things are now done in Tallahassee, and most importantly, I'm back here in the district, and if you need anything, I'm able to meet with you one-on-one and in person. For those of you that don't know me, even though I'm looking around, I think I see most people that are familiar with my work, with the exception of maybe the vice mayor. I am Matt Forrest. We work at Ballard Partners. We've long represented the city of Palm Beach Gardens, as one of our longest clients, and it's a pleasure to represent you for this long. I always like to remind you that you have the entire firm at your disposal. I know I am your guy. You talk to me often. I talk to your staff often. However, you have the entire firm that backs you up, including Brian Ballard himself. We have offices all throughout the state, including DC, and it's our pleasure to represent the city of Palm Beach Gardens, most notably in this area, because I run the West Palm Beach office of Ballard Partners. So when I'm not in Tallahassee, I'm right down the road in West Palm Beach, and so it's really easy for us to have any in-person meetings that you may have throughout that. As I was saying, we do talk often throughout the session, so it's nice to at least come to a city council meeting, though, and present some high value or some highlights of the session. At the same time, I can't begin without saying thank you to your staff, who make my job possible in Tallahassee throughout the year, and especially this past session, the mayor, who visited Tallahassee often and really helped us to do what we needed to do up there. With that said, I'm going to dive into some of the highlights for the session that just wrapped up on March 8. And I'd also like to refer to you back to there is a session summary that are provided to the staff. That's really a better way to really dive into the bills and to talk to your staff. We would take up your entire evening tonight with diving into one single bill and all the nuances of each in particular topic. And so this is not a great setting for a deep dive into legislative updates. But with that said, I'll give you some highlights. Let's start with the appropriations work. Every year, the legislature must pass an annual budget for the state of Florida. This year, the budget was passed at $117.46 billion. That's a significant number, because it's roughly a $2 billion decrease from the last year. So moving away from any fiscal policy ideas you may have, I just look at it as $2 billion less in projects and other budgetary issues that they did previously. So a lean year in the budget world. We do go up and try to draw down some dollars to the city. We file appropriation projects based on needs from the staff. This year, in addition to your projects, we filed two. You were part of 2,772 other budget requests filed up in Tallahassee. So very competitive up there. In the end, the House included about 1,000 projects in their budget. The Senate included 1,255. They merged together and negotiated the differences. In the final budget, there are 1,547 projects, and I'm proud to say that one of them is for the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We filed two projects with the help of the people that represent you, Representative Caruso and Senator Powell. We filed a $1.5 million request for the RCA Boulevard roadway improvement, and we also filed a stormwater system improvement project with both sponsors as well. We started out great. To get my specifics right, the Senate included the stormwater project in their budget. The House included the road project in their budget. And so you go into negotiations, you're feeling pretty good. You're in one side or the other. Unfortunately, in the end, like I said, that $2 billion cut, when you go into negotiations like that, you're not going to keep everything, and so things are going to end up on the editing room floor, as I like to say. So in the end, though, we walked away in the budget with $400,000 for the RCA Boulevard improvements. So I'm happy that, to use a sports metaphor, we're in the championship game now. It's a lot of work through the entire regular season and the playoffs to get into that final budget. The final act, of course, though, is when the budget is sent to the governor, and he issues his line item veto powers. We do expect that to happen in the next month. It'll be several weeks here yet. It could be even early June. Technically, the governor does not need to act on the budget until July 1, the next fiscal year. And we are expecting a very, very heavy veto list as well. Usually, it's about $1 billion. All indications through my meetings so far is that it will be a heavy veto. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we hold on to that $400,000. At the same time, I would tell you, the odds are probably against us with the local government projects, and the veto list is going to be long. But we'll continue to advocate for it. Moving on to legislation of note, there are just a few highlights I want to hit and give you a big picture. Again, there are thousands of bills filed during legislative session, thousands to be considered in both the House and Senate, but actually very few pass. I always joke, and it probably shows my age a little bit now, but the truth beyond that Schoolhouse Rock video is that most of the life expectancy of that bill is not good. Most of the bills die in Tallahassee. In fact, only a small percentage. So this year, only 325 bills pass both chambers that eventually go to the governor. As of today, 140 have been sent to the governor for his approval, and there's 126 remaining. The bills I'm going to talk to you about next are all still waiting to be sent to the governor. And there's no rhyme or reason when they're sent. They send, you know, a few dozen at a time. It's simply, there is a ticking clock once they're sent, and you do not want to send the governor 325 bills, you know, on Monday, and he's got 14 days to act on them, especially when most of the effective dates are July 1 or October 1. And so it's simply just, you know, waiting impatiently for the governor to review everything and kind of work through it administratively. The most notable bill, of course, this session was HB 479 for the city of Palm Beach Gardens, alternative mobility systems. We were heavily, heavily engaged on this bill. It was a top priority for the city, and, you know, I feel almost ridiculous trying to give you a summary of what it, because the experts of this bill are sitting up there with you, with the mayor, with Mr. Ferris and Mr. Lowman, who are up to their ears and beyond in this bill. But for the record, it creates a definition for alternative transportation fees that are mobility-based. Most importantly, here's what I think is the most important part. It clarifies that only one local government may charge an impact fee within its jurisdiction, and the developer pays the fee for the capacity they generate. And then also, most importantly, it stipulates that the primary local government charging the fee must address extra jurisdictional impacts. So pretty simple bill when it comes down to it, but you'd be surprised how hard it is to get something like this passed. The bill went through the process. This is not the first that's been filed, but I'm very happy to say that this year it passed through big negotiations, heavy negotiations with the Florida League of Cities, Florida Association of Counties, Developers Association, and here's where I think you guys have a lot to be proud of, the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Of all the cities in the entire state of Florida, you had that seat at the table. You had that voice. In fact, the League of Cities would defer to you and say, where is the city of Palm Beach Gardens on this project? And so you'd be commended for leading what I know many, many cities now will hopefully take advantage of. The bill has one of those 138 bills yet to be sent to the governor. Like I said, we're patiently waiting. I have engaged with the governor's office staff. We have advocated there. We've told our side of the story. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that eventually it will be sent and go forward from there. On that one, I'm going to pause just a second and again say thank you to the mayor and thank you to Max. I cannot tell you how many hours, phone calls, emails, redrafts, talking points we did for the last three months. And so really, I cannot give you take credit for any passage of the bill. I simply say your city and your staff gave us the resources in order to get that thing across. A couple of the bills I want to highlight real quick for you, and then I'll answer any questions you may have. Some important bills that passed that are also still waiting to go to the governor. HB 267, residential building permits. I was just talking with your qualified staff, who I also know very well for years. It's more expediting of permits, more expediting of permits. Tallahassee, if you want to go with the theme up there, it's, we think local governments are holding on to permits for too long. So it's another bill that kind of speeds that up. Another bill that's been around for a long time, vacation rentals. HB, oh, sorry, Senate Bill 280 this year regarding vacation rentals passed. So and a lot of times every year, this bill goes up there and it dies. This year, it passed. Again, it has not been signed by the governor. This is still a controversial bill. I know several cities would like it vetoed. I know several vacation rental managers associations would like it vetoed. I know a lot of hoteliers that would like it signed. It's definitely one of those bills where it can't be as bad as people say it is, and it can't be as good as other people say it is. It's probably kind of right down the middle. From the city of Palm Beach Gardens perspective, I think it gives you more tools in the toolbox if you want to regulate vacation rentals. I don't think it takes any tools away, but that is still a bill I think that will be, you'll hear a lot of attention about it, and if you need more information, I'm happy to provide it. My next one is HB 328, affordable housing. This was an amended, kind of, another addition to the Live Local Act that passed two sessions ago. This is a big push by the Senate President for affordable housing initiatives that gets a lot of incentives to developers if, and here's the big thing that most local governments forget, if they do an affordable housing part of their project. So yes, they do get higher density. Yes, they get higher height limitations if they lock into a lot of different requirements when it comes to affordable housing. There were more changes to that bill passed, which I know your staff will want to be updated on once it is signed. Also of note, a couple of bills that failed that I think are important to take note of. HB 609, local business taxes. This was a bill that would have essentially, as filed, eliminate a local government's ability to levy a local business tax, local business receipt, local business registry, whatever you may want to call it. It would prohibit that. A large impact to some cities based on the revenue that comes in, but most notably, I think, to a lot of other local governments, it definitely would change the way you're able to document what businesses are in your community and where they're located and what they're doing, you know, simply what kind of business is operating there. That bill failed, but again, I have a feeling it will be filed again, and this kind of thing will come back. Another bill that failed, again, but I think it's only a matter of time before it eventually passes, and this is a bill relating to sovereign immunity. This bill has now been around for several years. It's been over a decade or plus since the last sovereign immunity caps were put in, which I'm sure your city attorney would tell me, I believe it's 200, 300, that limits your liability to $200,000 or $300,000 in civil claims. The bills have been all over the place in the last few years. We've seen unlimited versions. We've seen $1 million here or there. The bills this year, why I'm telling you to be ready is they moved in the House, they moved in the Senate. The things that kind of, where they eventually didn't get to the end on it was, I think a lot of it was tying it to the Consumer Price Index and maybe building it in so it can move with that cost-of-living adjustments with other things, and eventually the bill died. This is one of those, it's not going to go away. It's a matter of time, in my opinion, Matt Forrest's personal opinion, it's a matter of time before they raise that limit. And so just plan accordingly, I think, with any kind of budgetary worst you can do or how to mitigate that. Those are the bills I wanted to put on your radar. The next thing and the last thing I want to talk about is timeline, because this is always the important thing. I know I'm the only one that lives and dies by this schedule, but just to kind of remind you, it's going to be quiet, hopefully, in Tallahassee for a little while. Well, I should say that. I wrote these notes 24 hours ago, and today I heard there's a strong chance we have a special session at the end of the month. But I still think, given a special session, will be very limited in the scope. Everybody's in election mode now. So we're at the end of a two-year cycle. When we go back to Tallahassee in March for the 2025 session, there'll be a new Speaker of the House, new Senate President. In regards to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, your representative, Rep. Caruso, is on the ballot. If elected, will be going into his senior year, which is always a great time to have somebody representing you and kind of the height of their influence in their chamber. Rep. Roth, who represents a small section of the city out to the west, is termed out. So you will have a new representative in that seat, no matter what. Senator Powell, who is longtime representative of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, is not seeking reelection. He's running for the county commission. And so you will have a new senator representing the city as well. So going into the next session, which will start in, the session will start in March, but we'll be gearing up after the November election, we'll be educating new representatives, new senators that represent you of what's important to the city. And so things will stay quiet roughly till then. I'll be working with your staff throughout the summer on any projects that they want to file, but we'll really hit the ground running in probably October, November, December, after that election. And with that, I will pause and answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Matt. Counsel? None? All right. City Attorney, City Manager, none? All right. On their behalf, I would like to say thank you so much for everything you've done to represent our city so, so well. It is an honor to work with you, and Ballard Partners has stood beside us, and we couldn't ask for someone better to help us navigate Tallahassee, which you did. You made it look easy, and I know it's not, because those were some, those were three pretty intense months, and it was great to do something that will make a huge difference for our residents, and a lot of that was on your shoulders. So we really thank you for your time and your efforts and your dedication. Thank you. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have another presentation. Next is future plans for the North Palm Beach County General Aviation Airport. We have Ms. Lori Beebe here, the Director of Airports. Welcome to our podium. Nice to see you.
Thank you for having me here today to speak about the proposed project at the North County Airport. Today, I have with me Gary Seipek, our Senior Deputy Director. So first, I'm going to start with a general overview of the existing conditions at the airport, provide you a brief history of the airport, an overview of the operational limitations that are driving the project, and an overview of the proposed project and a few key points. For those of you that may not be familiar with the airport, it has three runways consisting of a paved east-west runway, which is 4,300 feet long by 100 feet wide, a paved crosswind runway, 1432, which is the project runway, which is 4,300 feet long by 75 feet wide and is considered the preferred noise-abatement runway. We also have a turf east-west runway, which is a little less than 4,000 feet and 75 feet wide. The airport's classified as a regional general aviation airport and serves as a designated reliever for the Palm Beach International Airport for general aviation aircraft. The airport supports both business and recreational and general aviation with more than 250 based aircraft, 176 storage hangars, and approximately 100,000 annual operations. As indicated on the graphic, the majority of the operations are currently conducted with piston aircraft comprising about 79% of the operations. So the North County Airport is located on 1,800 acres of land in North Palm Beach County. It's approximately two miles west of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, and it's bordered by the Beeline Highway to the north and to the east, and the Waukesha Haci Slough to the south. The county's airports, including the North County Airport, are important economic engines for the local economy, including the city. In a recent FDOT economic study, they concluded that the North County Airport is responsible for the creation of more than 400 jobs and about, it has an annual economic impact of about $77 million per year. This slide provides a brief history and overview of the project. In the 1990s, the site for the county's last airport, the North County Airport, was selected in a relatively remote location of Palm Beach County. In 1990, the county and the city entered into an interlocal agreement related to the development of the airport, which established certain use restrictions, including a limitation on runway lengths. In 1994, the airport opened for business. We're now having our 30th anniversary. In 2008, the county adopted a master plan identifying the future need for an extension of the crosswind runway. In 2016, the city and the county entered into an amendment to that interlocal agreement providing for the extension of the crosswind runway to 6,000 feet with the condition that the county applied for an air traffic control tower. In 2019, FAA approved the purpose and need for the extension of the runway, and that followed by the environmental assessment process. On April 9, 2023, the draft environmental assessment was released for public comment. Following the public comment period, the EA will be finalized, taking into consideration all the public comments, which will be followed by a formal record of decision by the FAA, which will either have a finding of no significant impact or requiring further environmental review. Following the record of decision, we will move forward, assuming that there's a finding of no significant impact, we'll be moving forward with design, which we anticipate will take about 12 months, followed by construction, and then ultimately completion of the project. The next two slides are excerpts from key provisions of the interlocal agreement, as well as the 2016 amendment. So you can see, this is the amendment that provided for the extension of the runway to 6,000 feet. So operational limitations are the primary reason the project is being proposed. There are a number of factors, such as aircraft weight, wind direction, elevation, temperature that can affect an aircraft's takeoff and landing distance. While smaller and sub-midsize corporate jets operate at the North County Airport, pilots may be required to reduce the number of passengers, the amount of payload, and/or the amount of fuel to depart from the North County Airport based on environmental conditions. Midsize corporate jets may elect to use alternative airports due to operational limitations or not able to use it based on runway length at all. As I mentioned, the airport was established as a designated reliever for Palm Beach for general aviation. However, the operational limitations reduce its capacity to serve as a true reliever for the airport. Population and business growth also support the need to accommodate general aviation So an overall project summary, we are proposing an extension to runway 14 to the northwest, increasing the runway length by about 1,700 feet, and widening the entire length of the runway by 25 feet for a total width of 100 feet, as well as other connected actions, such as extending the parallel taxiway, clearing objects, roads and vegetation, and culvering an existing ditch. The existing Airport Reference Code, which is the coding system used related to airport design criteria for the operational and physical characteristics of an aircraft that are intended to operate at the airport, will be changing from a B2 to a C2. This change provides for a higher approach speed, but does not change the airplane design group, which means the airplane design group relates to wingspan and tail height. The proposed project also includes supporting actions, including the rehabilitation of the existing runways and taxiway pavements, and construction and operation of a federal contract tower, as provided in the interlocal agreement. The county submitted an application for a federal contract tower and has been identified as a candidate in the program. And as I mentioned, the draft environmental assessment has been completed and is available for public comment and review. So based on the environmental assessment and the minimal change to the Airport Reference Code, we don't anticipate any significant impacts as a result of the proposed project. Potential impacts are analyzed and summarized in detail in the draft environmental assessment, which is that very large document sitting in my chair, and it's available for public review and comment. I also wanted to make a couple of key points about the project. It's not anticipated to result in a significant increase in aircraft operations. It's not anticipated to change airspace or flight tracks or routes into or out of the airport. It is not anticipated to result in a significant change in noise levels, and it will not result in commercial scheduled air service. In other words, the airport will remain a general aviation airport. The county doesn't anticipate a significant increase in the size of aircraft that will operate at the airport based on the design criteria. The tables on this slide provide estimates for the number of operations, assuming the project does not happen, referred to as a no-action alternative in the environmental assessment, and the number of operations that the proposed project moves forward. It's important to note that the number of operations includes both landings and takeoffs. Based on the estimates, assuming the project is completed in 2025, the number of operations would increase by about another 750 operations a year or less than 1%. By 2030, the total number of operations would increase by an additional 2,500 aircraft a year or about 2.3%. It should be noted, whether or not the proposed project moves forward, the anticipated number of operations will continue to grow. Assuming no action, the estimated number of operations is still anticipated to increase by more than 7,000 operations per year or about a 7% increase. The environmental assessment provides a detailed analysis of potential noise impacts as a result of the project, including other potential environmental impacts. However, I'm focusing on noise, because that tends to be the primary community concern. Noise is measured based on a day/night sound level, which takes into account, one, the noise levels of individual aircraft events, the number of times those events occur, and the time of day that they occur. DNL represents the noise level for an average day of the year on an annual basis, and the FAA defines DNL of 65 decibels as a threshold of noise compatibility for residential land uses. The level of normal conversation is typically used as an example, and that's at 60 decibels. The DNL contours are a graphical representation and distribution of noise over the surrounding areas from an airport's average annual daily operations, and that's, and you can see from the dashed blue line, that's the boundary of the airport. The FAA considers the noise impact to be significant if a proposed project would increase noise within the 65 DNL by 1.5 decibels, or would cause a noise sense of an air area to fall within the 65 DNL contour. As I mentioned earlier, the airport is more than 1,800 acres and is bound by natural areas. As a result, there are no noise-sensitive sites within the contours. All of the contours are within the boundary of the airport. This doesn't mean that aircraft will not be seen or heard off airport property as they are today, or that there won't be an increase in activity whether or not the proposed project moves forward. However, as noted in the environmental assessment in this slide and the next slide, a significant impact in noise-sensitive areas is not anticipated. All of this information is in the environmental assessment document as well, which is available on our website. So this slide provides a scaled representation of the typical aircraft that currently operate at the airport today and those that might be expected to operate at the airport in the future. And this slide provides a few photographs of the existing aircraft capable of using the airport and future aircraft. And as I mentioned, the full assessment is available on our website. In addition, the public is encouraged to attend a public workshop for more information on May 14. Our consultant will be available at the workshop to answer detailed questions about the report, and comments can also be submitted in writing or at the public hearing portion of the meeting, which will start at 6:30 PM. And with that, I just want to thank you for your time and answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from Counsel? Dana?
Hi. Thank you, Laura, for the presentation. It's been very informative. I appreciate it. Seen it, you know, before. This is my second time seeing it. You know, it's very thorough. I appreciate it, and thank you for doing the public comments on May 14, the workshop. So I think that'll be very valuable as well. Does the airport currently run 24/7?
Yes.
It does? Okay. And the run, the extension of the runway, is that going to take effect whether or not a tower is put there?
The interlocal agreement requires the county to provide, to make an application for a federal contract tower, which we have already done. We're a candidate in the program, and it's also contemplated in the environmental assessment. So our plan is to move forward with the runway project and concurrently the air traffic control project. Obviously, there are a number of things that need to happen, design, construction, funding. So we're still several years out.
Okay. Because I think that's important, because I think safety is everyone's, you know, number one priority. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Counselmember Tinsley?
Thank you. And like Counselmember Dana Milton, I also want to thank you for bringing this, again, to our attention, and also the public outreach and information. I think more information is better than none, and is much appreciated. So thank you, and being proactive with it. And obviously, some of us were here in 2016 when the first extension talk came to fruition, and we amended the interlocal agreement, which we appreciate. In that, of course, it talked about noise abatement and hours. I did actually do my homework last night, and I was looking at the, both interlocal agreements and kind of refreshing myself with them. And then I went on the website, the Lantana, which also has a noise abatement procedures and hours, and then the North County Airport. And I noticed Lantana has an actual link for the pilots, and whomever, to read the noise abatement procedures, whereas the North County Airport does not. So I would love to see that, and then I have a few questions in regards to that. How do we get that information out to pilots, or how do you guys do that? Because obviously, there isn't a tower right now. And in addition, is it posted anywhere besides, clearly not on the website, but is it posted somewhere else?
And I think you make a good point. We can post that, and we should post that on our website, so we will do that. I'm sure it'll be there by next week. We also provide the information at the airport itself, and we do also have information in the chart supplement.
How is that enforced?
We have a general aviation manager at the airport, and it's also incorporated in our agreement with fixed-based operator.
And in addition to that, has there ever been any violations in regards to that? I mean, I haven't heard of any, but I don't know. You might...
Not that I'm aware of. Are you aware of any?
And so, thank you for doing that, for posting. I appreciate that. Are there going to be any additional FBOs at North County? I know that that's a big, hot topic amongst all private airports, and Boca has no room, Lantana has no room for expansion. Is that what you're considering for this?
I can tell you, because of that issue, there is no aviation land at any of the airports or facilities. Our agreement with the current fixed-based operator expires next year. It is our intention to issue a RFP for two fixed-based operations at that airport because of aviation demand primarily.
And are you going to be, when you do that or when that comes to fruition, are you going to be planning any procedures in regards to the neighborhoods, safety, and obviously the tower is one of them?
But, you know... We do have a monthly meeting at the airport. It's a safety meeting. As far as monthly community meetings, that's not something we typically do. We do have an advisory board that the public is welcome to attend that happens quarterly. It's the Aviation Airports Advisory Board, and that information is available on our website as well. And I think everybody has my email address, so they also can feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that, and I guess I just want to encourage you to continue the dialogue as the growth occurs. Obviously, our Western communities have grown exponentially, and that's natural. But as you grow with the Western communities, we'd love to continue that dialogue and help make it a thoughtful growth for everybody.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate your comments. Like I said, we will make sure that information is on our website, and we'll make sure to refresh everybody at the airport on the noise abatement rules.
Thank you.
Great. All right, just one last question. Aside from your website, where can people find information, anything about this or otherwise? Do you have any other mediums, or should everyone be going to your website consistently?
For purposes of this project, I would direct everybody to the website. The entire environmental assessment is available on the website, as well as information about the upcoming public workshop. That will be happening on May fourteenth, and it's at the Palm Beach County State College at the Palm Beach Gardens campus. There'll be an hour where people can walk around, ask questions. We'll be there. Our consultants will be there. After that closes, that will open the public hearing portion. Then we'll stay until all of the comments are heard or in the record. And at that point, we take all of the comments and we provide responses as part of the overall environmental assessment.
Oh, great. Okay, great. And so, for the public workshop and public comments, are you advertising it anywhere or is it also only on the website?
It is. I think there's other advertising.
It was in the newspaper.
Okay, great.
In the newspaper and on our website, and we're also sending it out. I believe we sent it out on our county website calendar, as well as our airport calendar.
Okay, great. Wonderful. The more we can share information, the more we can all get the data we need. So that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
And feel free to share it with your constituents. We sent the meeting information to our board members and asked them to please share it with their constituents as well. So, please, feel free to do that. We do want public comment, and we do intend on responding to each and every comment.
All right, consider it done. Thank you. Will do. All right, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have two more presentations. If District Captain Alex Lamb can please come up to the podium, presenting on raising the bar pre-hospital blood transfusions. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Mrs. Merritt, city council, city manager, and city staff. I appreciate your time tonight. I would like to just give you guys an update on something that Dr. Shepke spoke about when he was here a couple of months ago, when he mentioned that we may be starting a whole blood program. As a department, we pride ourselves on providing the best care possible to our residents, and we're always looking for ways to improve the services that we can provide. I've been here twenty-seven years. I'm very excited about this program. I think in my time here, this is probably the program that has the most potential to make the biggest impact in patients' lives. So I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to update you on where we're at with the program and what's involved with it. So the why. Why whole blood? Right? We're so close to a trauma center. Why do we need whole blood? Severely injured patients are some of the most critical and complex patients that we can treat. Their injuries typically involve multiple body systems, their respiratory systems, and can also include large amounts of blood loss. Uncontrolled and uncorrected bleeding remains the number-one cause of preventable death in trauma patients. Nearly all of our patients or nearly all of the patients nationwide who suffer from severe bleeding die before they reach a surgeon and the hospital. And not only can whole blood be used in trauma, but it can also be used for non-traumatic So the average human has about four and a half to five and a half liters of blood circulating around their body at any time. It only takes fifteen percent blood loss to start showing signs of shock, and that's in a healthy adult. Our elderly population, people with comorbidities, people with other medical conditions, it takes a lot less blood for them to become shocky. When we thought about doing this, we did a retrospective review over 2023 to see how many patients could have benefited from whole blood had we had it, and we found there were about fourteen patients that we had treated that when we didn't have this lifesaving therapy, that could have benefited from it. So, in our business, minutes matter. For the longest time, we've lived by the doctrine of the golden hour. So the golden hour says that a trauma patient who's severely injured has one hour to get to a trauma surgeon and to a trauma center. That gives them the best chance of life. What we're finding out through studies from the battlefields overseas is we don't have a golden hour. Most of the data that's coming out of those war zones shows that blood needs to be administered within the first five to fifteen minutes. Five to fifteen minutes is about as long as it takes us to get to the trauma center. So anything we can do for these patients greatly enhances their chances of survival and getting to a surgeon and getting the surgery they need. So the old versus the new on the left is an IV bag of normal saline. And for the longest time, that was our only option for treating severely bleeding trauma patients. Unfortunately, I've been doing it long enough to where I can remember putting three, four, or five liters of fluid inside of a trauma patient, and by the time they get to the hospital, they're bleeding pink. So although that was our best option previously, there's a new option now, and one that will benefit the patients greatly. The problem with saline is it not only dilutes the blood, it hampers the body's ability to clot, and it's unable to carry oxygen. Blood, as we know, is vital for life. It not only carries nutrients, it carries oxygen around the body, but it also has platelets in it which help the body to clot off by itself and prevent further blood loss. So how do we do it? What's some of the equipment we need to do pre-hospital blood transfusions? We need four pieces of equipment. We need the blood. We need the blood cooler to keep the blood cool. And we need the blood warmer to warm the blood back up, and we need a way to take the blood out of the bag and infuse it into the patient. So first, like we spoke about, the O-positive whole blood that we carry not only provides volume to the patient, but it also provides the platelets for clotting. It carries the hemoglobin so that the oxygen can be transported around the body. The blood is a little bit finicky. It needs to be kept within a very narrow range of temperature, and that temperature is one degrees to six degrees Celsius. So it's imperative for the time we have the blood that we maintain it in a very tight window. This blood is being carried on the EMS supervisor's vehicle. We carry one unit of blood at a time. We did get this cooler. It's kind of nice. It's the latest, greatest. This does a fantastic job of not only keeping the blood cool, but also monitoring the temperature of the blood while it's in our custody. So this will take temperature measurements every second, and every fifteen minutes it uploads those temperatures to a web-based temperature tracking system so that we can see the temperature of that unit of blood the entire time we have it. And that's going to be important in a couple of slides when I explain why it's so important that we keep track of exactly what temperature the blood is. The third thing we need is a blood warmer. So now we need to take the very cold blood out of the cooler, and we need to get it up to body temperature and infuse it into the patient. We do that using this piece of equipment. This is called the Q and Flow Blood Warmer. This will take the blood from four degrees Celsius up to thirty-eight degrees Celsius instantly, so as it goes into the body. As it passes through the warmer, it comes out the other side completely warm. The reason it's so important to warm the blood is hypothermia is one of the things that is extremely dangerous to the patient who suffered a significant traumatic event. And the last thing we need is a way to infuse it. We have this gadget here. This is called the Life Flow Blood Infuser. It's really kind of a low-tech solution, but this will take the blood from the bag. Each squeeze delivers ten cc's of blood. We can get a unit of blood in the patient in about two minutes. So it does a really, really good job. And as a side note, not only do we use this for our blood administration, but we also use it to administer fluid to our sepsis patients who also need large amounts of fluid over a very short period of time. In addition to the whole blood, part of this bundle of care for our trauma patients is a new medication that we've started carrying called TXA. TXA is kind of a neat medication because once administered inside the body, it prevents the body from breaking down its own clots that are formed naturally during the process. So the body does not like clots. As soon as the body sees a clot, it tries to break it down. This medicine kind of goes in and kind of buffers that reaction. So not only are we replacing their fluid with the blood, we're also giving them a medication to aid in the clotting process so their own natural clotting process can take place. So where are we right now? We implemented our whole blood program on April eighth. We are one of two agencies in Palm Beach County to carry whole blood. We're one of three agencies in the whole of South Florida to carry whole blood, and we're one of eight agencies in the state that carries whole blood. We're also currently pioneering a partnership with our local trauma center and laying the groundwork for a blood exchange program so that we don't waste blood. Blood is an extremely precious commodity. It's extremely rare, and we want to be good stewards of that blood when we get it. So right now, we're in talks with St. Mary's Medical Center, our local trauma center, to do a rotational program where, when our blood comes towards the end of its life, we can hopefully eventually take it in, give it to them so they can use it, and we get a fresher unit. So that's something we're working on now. Knock on wood, we'll have an update on that in a month or so. And just finishing up, I've got a couple of thank yous. When we decided to do this program, it was mid-budget year. It was June of last year, and we hadn't budgeted for this. We felt so strongly that it was such an important new therapy that we wanted to get it on the streets as soon as possible. So as not to impact the budget, we went out and applied for grants. Ballinale Shari's Foundation was extremely gracious. They awarded as a grant which not only covered the startup costs of getting the material, but also most of the first year's operating costs for the program. So this is something that we've been able to provide through their generosity, and we're extremely thankful for that. We'd also like to thank you guys. The support that you guys continue to have for the fire department doesn't go unnoticed. It's very much appreciated. The support of Mr. Ferriss and his staff is very appreciated. Without your support, we could not continue to be one of the premier fire rescue agencies in the state of Florida. So we really do appreciate your support. And last but definitely not least, I'd like to thank the men and women of the fire department. They're out there every day carrying out the mission tirelessly. Without them, none of this would be possible. So that concludes my presentation. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Thank you, Captain Lamb. Let's see. Questions? I did overhear Carl say that best fire station may be in the country, but yes.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, again and again.
I just want to say thank you for taking an initiative to do this and also for keeping our city on the cutting edge and doing what you do for our community. And count me in for volunteering. I'm type O, and I will be happy to donate when you're ready.
We'll get you by the end of the night. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming. And thank you also to Ballinale's charities for always coming in when our city needs it and for you guys thinking of doing it mid-budget and pursuing it anyway. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Very proud of this. All right, finally, we have Casey Mitchell, general manager at our Sand Hill Crane Golf Club. If you could please come up to recognize and present two distinguishing, excuse me, distinguished awards to Clinton Tingen and Jordan Liddy. Hi there, Casey.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the record, Casey Mitchell, general manager at Sand Hill Crane Golf Club. Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I am here as two of my staff members have reached tremendous milestones in their professional careers and in their respective associations and have achieved certifications that I would like to publicly recognize. I'll try to be brief, but the two gentlemen sitting up here tonight have done a lot in the last couple of years, so please bear with me. Before I begin, I'd just like to highlight that the Palm Beaches just released their twenty best golf courses in Palm Beach County. It's a list of public and private courses. There's Seminole Golf Club, Breakers, Rees Jones, and Ocean, High Ridge, Bears Club. So the first seven are private facilities. Eight starts their list of public access. Sand Hill Crane and The Nest Par Three were third on that list. So just, it's a testament to the amenities, layout, course conditions, and the playability of the courses, which is a really nice segue into the real reason why I am here tonight. As you all know, the one hundred and fifteen acre parcel located adjacent to Sand Hill Crane was recently developed for additional golf amenities, where a thirty-one hundred-yard par-three nest course, clubhouse, and additional golf amenities came to life in August of last year. So tonight, I want to first recognize our director of agronomy, Mr. Clinton Tingen, who joined us in December of 2021, just in time to oversee the build and grow-in of the course and practice facilities. Clint is a former Marine Corps corporal who turned to turf grass management with a turf degree from N.C. State University. Clint is currently a grassroots ambassador and serving as the secretary and the board of directors for the Palm Beach Golf Course Superintendents Association and was elected to the state board of directors where he will serve his three-year term beginning next month. After becoming a certified golf course superintendent, he's been interviewed for the Florida chapter of the GCSAA Florida Green Magazine, the copy is that you have before you tonight, Sirius XM PGA Tour Radio, GCSAA Golf Course Maintenance Magazine, and the most recent interview he did was with the Superintendents Network, which I will play for you tonight.
When I told the first superintendent I worked for, Craig, that I wanted to go into this industry, he said, "All Marines don't make it because you guys get too stressed out." And I think whether it was my rodeo days or riding bulls or running heavy equipment for my dad, you know, everything in my whole life has taught me that tomorrow's another Growing up, I grew up on a farm in North Carolina, so we grew up doing that, and everybody had a little landscape company, mow yards around town and stuff like that. I worked for a landscape company through high school. After high school, I joined the Marines. So I was a military police officer for your United States Marine Corps from 2000 to 2004. Not something that I had dreamed of doing when I was a teenager. It seemed like a good summer idea when I joined the Marines. They sent me from MP school to Okinawa, Japan. I spent almost two years over there getting deployed on Navy ships. Came back from that and got sent to Iraq and did Iraqi Freedom in 2003, and after eight months in the sandbox, is what we would call it, you know, turned into a career in grass was, seemed like a pretty good idea eventually. I'm not a huge fan of bunkers anymore. During construction, a windy day in construction will remind me of places I have been weren't the most pleasant times in my life. So the biggest thing that I would take, that I take from that world to this, is the ability of that, that everybody... to adapt, that everybody has, you can have whatever plan you want to, you know, in this industry, Mother Nature's in charge. So the ability to take your plan and change it from a day-to-day basis, hour to hour. I found when I was in the Marines, I made the best friends of my life. You know, we joked. It's really like it was VRBO before we knew what VRBO was. I can stay at places from Maine to Southern California at a buddy's house that I haven't seen in fifteen years. Making those relationships that were lifelong bonds came from just treating each other with respect and everybody working for the same goal and stressing that. So I try to do that with my team here, to get everybody on the same page, stay on the same page, be supportive. You're a family, and just like a family, you'll have arguments and you'll have disagreements, and somebody's got to be in charge. But as long as you treat everybody with respect, keep moving forward, and everybody knows the goal and the direction we're headed in, I think that's how you accomplish great things.
Clint not only worked within a tight timeline and dynamic golf grass-growing conditions to get the course open in time, but he's worked diligently on creating a BMP manual for the golf facility and certifying both courses through the Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary for Golf. This program helps to protect our environment and preserve the natural heritage of the game of golf. Clint's been responsible for renovations at Boca Polo and Hope Sound before coming to us at Sand Hill and was an invaluable asset to our course build and continued success related to the course conditions. After becoming a Class A Golf Course Superintendent, Clint entered into the Certified Golf Course Superintendent Program, and since joining us, has become one of fewer than a thousand professionals through the GCSAA worldwide. This rigorous program includes an examination, peer evaluation, site visits, communications and leadership attesting, golf course evaluations, BMP reviews, and additional assessments. The Certified Golf Course Superintendent Designation is the highest recognition that can be achieved by golf course superintendents. I'm proud to recognize his hard work and dedication tonight with a CGCS certification. I'm also here tonight to acknowledge our Head Professional at Sand Hill Crane, Mr. Jordan Liddy. Jordan came to us in September of 2022. He and his wife took a leap of faith, moving away from friends and family in Ohio to further his career in the South Florida sunshine. Hired initially as our first assistant, our then Golf Operations Manager, Michael Armit, and I very quickly knew we had found a keeper. Jordan's articulate, caring, and a true professional's professional. Jordan had completed his Level One books and testing of the PGA Golf Management Program when he joined us. Between moving, starting a new job, and preparing for a new addition to their family, their baby girl, Margot, who joined him and Aaron in November of last year, Jordan completed his last two levels and certifications within a year of joining the Sand Hill Crane team. A total of twelve books, including Golf Operations, Advanced Teaching and Golf Club Alteration, Customer Relations, Supervising and Delegating, Player Development, and more. He flew out to Frisco, Texas for his final evaluation at the new PGA headquarters and was elected to membership late last year. Jordan's ability to adapt and his passion for the game in our facility was invaluable during our expansion. He was quickly promoted to Tournaments and Special Events Coordinator and then to title of Head Golf Professional, where he now oversees the day-to-day operations at Sand Hill Crane. As if this wasn't enough, Jordan was asked to be a part of the South Florida PGA Mentorship Program, a program where newly-elected PGA Class A members mentor PGA associates who are now going through the program. Jordan is currently mentoring an Assistant Professional at Bear Lakes, sharing his knowledge and experiences as his mentee makes his way through the PGA three levels, bookwork and testing on his road to also becoming a Class A. I've seen this gentleman run on four hours of sleep and a four-pack of Celsius more times than should be humanly possible, always with a smile on his face and ready to tackle the day. So I'm very proud of the professional he has become and proud to introduce him to you all tonight as a Class A member of the PGA of America. If I could have Mayor and Council join us for a picture?
We would love that. We're on our way.
Thank you. And David.
Thank you guys so much for these wonderful presentations this evening. Next, we're moving on to comments from the public. I do have comment cards for items not on the agenda. We have over thirty comment cards tonight with an allotment of about three minutes per person. If you'll bear with me for a moment, I'm just, there might be some folks who haven't come to give public comment before, so we'd just like to share a little of information for you so you kind of know a little bit more about what to expect. So we are about to hold a public hearing where there'll be presentations, testimony, questions, answers, and discussion. And above all, mutual respect and consideration is expected. This meeting is important to all of us, and we're all here because we care and we want it to be conducted with decorum. So to ensure that we meet these expectations, we have a couple of ground rules. First, this chamber functions most effectively and efficiently by following rules of decorum with respectful professional tone and conduct. If you plan to comment publicly, please ensure that you have been sworn in, stating your full name and your address for the record when you come up to the podium. You make your comments within the allotted time, which is three minutes, and just so you know, keep in mind, one minute of speaking is about a hundred and fifty words, so if you prepared your words for the night, you're looking for about three hundred to four hundred and fifty words when you speak. Again, when you address your comments, if you could address them to the Presiding Officer, which is me, we'd appreciate that. Do not address individual members of the council, staff, or other members of the public. If your comments are identical to other people who have already spoken, please just simply state that and state the different comment that you would like to share so that we can hear everybody and allow them the allotted time. We ask you to be courteous and respectful, allow others to complete their comments without interruption, without noises, without comments or gestures. Please do not clap, cajole, or ridicule any speaker, whether they are a council member, staff, or a representative of the public here to speak tonight. Please utilize common courtesy. Any actions that disrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting, out of the accordance of these basic principles of decorum, may be ruled out of order and would result in being removed from the proceedings. We don't want that to happen. So we cultivate and protect an atmosphere where members of our council and our public can attend to municipal business. That's why we're here. We're attending to municipal business openly, fairly, respectfully, and with full participation. With that, we'll go right into it. My first card is for Mr. Sal Fasso. Mr. Fasso, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sal Fasso, thirteen eight oh five Emerson Street, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I'm your newest resident in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I was waiting for my welcome package, but I didn't get any. Anyhow, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. The subject I'm going to mention is the Airport Authority plan to expand the G forty-five. So that you know, I've been following this since about the year two thousand, so I've got a lot of history behind that. Participated in the development of the amendment in two thousand and sixteen. Hal Valache was the Commissioner at the time. We did have the FAA come in. We have lots of questions, but tonight, we're here to learn, and we did, from the presentation made by Laura Beebe. She presented also at our annual meeting, the NCNC Annual Meeting. I guess a couple of things that kind of reinforce, we want to be working with them. We're not against anything. We don't necessarily have a position to take at this point in time until we understand the facts, understand the issues. We will advise our residents, I have six communities that are represented here tonight, either by their board members or leaders in their community, and we will be back to you with what we hear and what we learn and what we see and what our issues are, if we have any. The only other thing I would maintain is that we need to keep the communications channels open. Very important, as the council members were asking questions that are fundamentally good questions, but unless we get some transparency from the authority, then obviously we'll be able to address, you know, what you might have on your minds and what we have on our minds. So at this point in time, we have no position. We're just here to learn and here to participate, and we thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Matthew Camilla. After Matthew Camilla, we're going to have Darlene. I'm so sorry, I can't tell if that's a C or a G. It could be Cutledge regarding the Oaks Park. So if you could get ready, Darlene, to go after Mr. Camilla.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor, council members, may it please the council.
If you could state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nine six seven eight Osprey Isles Boulevard, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, three three four one two. Also President of the Osprey Isles Homeowners Association, but I don't come before you in that official capacity tonight. Just a word of caution, perhaps warning with regard to the airport expansion. We heard a statement made that North County will not be used for commercial flights and remain only a general aviation airport. Question, what guarantee do we, as the residents of Palm Beach Gardens, have, and where is that guarantee written? As a very young lawyer, somebody taught me a lesson that if it wasn't, if it cannot be read, it wasn't said. So I would like to see that guarantee somewhere in writing, either in the EA or in the comment period or something, that we do have that guarantee, that we're not going to see JetBlue, Delta, American flying in, or any other type of commercial aircraft. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Darlene, and I apologize if I can't see if it's Cutledge or Guttledge. Is there a Darlene coming to talk about the Oaks Park? No? All right. We'll move on to Evan Emerson, and after Mr. Emerson, we have Mr. Adam Cranmer. So Mr. Cranmer, if you could be prepared for your three minutes. Good evening. Come on up to the podium if you could state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Evan Emerson. I live at one zero two four nine North Military Trail, two oh six in Palm Beach Gardens. I grew up in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm currently a resident. I graduated from Palm Beach Gardens High School, and I work within the civil engineering world. I stand before you today to express my concerns about Resolution Twenty-One, twenty twenty-four, the plans to get rid of Plant Drive Park. Not only is the loss of Plant Drive Park detrimental to the community and its health and well-being, I see two alarming issues with this proposal, safety and land use. The first issue I'd like to address is community safety. The potential increase in traffic from this resolution on Holly Plant and Lilac Roads is alarming, particularly considering the proposed business hours and the intent of hosting large tournaments. Introducing a sports bar into a residential neighborhood near schools and churches is not only reckless, but it endangers children. Without the park, children will play in the streets, which increases the risk of accidents. Are there plans for comprehensive traffic and safety studies? I'd also like to address the issue of land use and statutory compliance. It seems the resolution in question is at odds with the park's intended municipal designation. The proposed ice rink lacks clear evidence of public demand, which breaches the principles of public-private partnerships as outlined in Florida Statute Two Fifty-Five, Part One. This could set a dangerous precedent implying that city land could be sold or leased and repurposed without proper public consultation or proof of benefit. Additionally, I firmly believe that a free community resource regularly used by the public should not be converted into a paid facility. Such a change would essentially commercialize a public asset, altering its intended purpose and accessibility. I respectfully request the council to retract their approval of Resolution Twenty-One, twenty twenty-four, as it appears to be a misuse of public property and fails to comply with the necessary statutes for public-private partnerships. Thank you for your time in considering our appeal.
Thank you, sir. Next up, thank you. I'm so sorry. I apologize. What I'd like to express, we have over thirty cards. If we're going to pause every time to clap, we'll be here for a long time. I want to make sure everyone gets their three minutes. So if we could not clap, cajole, or speak in between, we'd really appreciate it. Next, we have Adam Cranmer, and then after that will be Mike Martino.
Good evening, esteemed members of the council and Mr. Manager. My name's Adam Cranmer. I live at ninety-four nineteen Bloomfield Drive in Palm Beach Gardens. I stand before you today as a concerned member of our community to address the recent approval of Resolution Twenty-One, twenty-four regarding the public-private partnership with the Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation. Specifically, I urge council to rescind their approval of Plant Drive Park as the location to develop Palm Beach Gardens Ice Center. As you know, Plant Drive Park holds a special place in the hearts of many of our community. Since its establishment in nineteen sixty-five, it has served as a chairs gathering space for generations of residents. My grandparents moved to this neighborhood in nineteen seventy, and as my father and his brothers grew up playing at Plant Drive Park, my grandmother, Patricia Cranmer, could be found volunteering at the snack bar. I've spent my entire childhood in and around Palm Beach Gardens, developed an early passion for skateboarding, inline skating, and BMX. While we did not have a local skate park as a kid, I did attend the city-sanctioned Wednesday night skate sessions with ramps and rails provided by a resident that were set up in the parking lot of Plant Drive Park. This led to the city building the areas for a skate park in two thousand and two, and since then, it has become a vital hub for enthusiasts of all ages and scale levels, offering a free and accessible recreational opportunity that is unparalleled in our community. After resettling in Palm Beach Gardens as a newly divorced father attempting to navigate what co-parenting family life looks like, I brought my two sons, Ethan and Lucas, who are here tonight, to the skate park looking for something new to try. My boys immediately took to the park, and a few weeks later, I joined them on my bike. At thirty-six years old, a passion was immediately reignited in me. My boys and I have continued to share this activity together for the past seven years, meeting countless new friends and families and creating a bond that no other sport or activity could match, and this is all due to Garden Skate Park. The decision to redevelop such a community cornerstone, such as Plant Drive Park, a plan that extends forty years into the future without holding a public hearing, has understandably raised concerns among many residents and myself. It is imperative that we carefully consider the impact of such decisions on our public spaces. I first heard of this plan on Saturday, April sixth, and immediately took to social media and then created an online petition to halt the demolition of Palm Beach Gardens Skate Park and Plant Drive Park on April eighth. In this short time, we have received near, actually, over twenty-eight-hundred signatures from concerned community members demonstrating the need for more transparency in such a decision. Any claims of potential benefits of the proposed ice center outside of financial would be completely negated by the removal of the existing amenities at the park already providing the community the very benefits it's claiming to add. By rescinding Resolution Twenty-One, twenty-four, the council can demonstrate its commitment to transparent decision-making and prioritize the preservation of our city's beloved public spaces. I urge council to engage in a thoughtful reconsideration of this matter. Let us work together to find a solution that honors our past, meets the needs of our present, and preserves the legacy of Plant Drive Park for future generations. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mike Martino, and after Mr. Martino, we have Rebecca McKeich, K-M-C-K-E-I-C-H. Good evening, sir. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Mike Martino. I live at three twenty Balsam Street, where I've been fortunate to open the door for fifty-nine years. I've also served the city of Palm Beach Gardens as a council member and a mayor for over twenty years. Thus, it pains me tonight to make the following assessments, as was the councils that I saw. As was the councils that I served with, this council is morally and ethically responsible for its actions, accepting blame or praise for decisions as part of the job. I find it totally unacceptable, almost outrageous, that Resolution 21 was scheduled for a vote without public notice, information, and a public hearing to explain the need for it. In the strongest terms possible, I disagree with the approval. It is bad policy. It demolishes Plant Drive Park for a hockey facility. I oppose the location and the destruction of the park, excuse me. I disagree with the process used by the city to bring the resolution to the agenda. It was secretive. The public was entirely excluded. The welfare and interests of the public were not considered. The process lacked transparency. Transparency is the cornerstone of the Sunshine Law. It was absent in the approval of Resolution 21. In my opinion, communication, openness, and accountability were not evident. Casting your vote is expected, but why, how, and with whom you discussed that vote, the public must be informed of. At the approval meeting, a referenced agreement, neighborhood impacts, traffic, drainage, et cetera, were not discussed with the public. How did an unsolicited proposal locate Plant Drive to demolish it? That is an interesting but unanswered question as of yet. I am not aware of any, any public council discussion about the leasing, sale, or demolishing of Plant Drive Park. The resolution offered two reasons, as far as I could read. One was an unsolicited proposal for a hockey facility, and the second was the claim that the malcontents that vandalized the park. No other reasons have been offered. So ask yourself, are those reasons enough to completely pave over a 59-year-old park, its amenities, its open space, while destroying its historical value?
You could summarize, sir. We want to make sure everyone gets their three minutes. I'll give you 15 more seconds.
Thank you. In residents' memories, as I did in my email to each of you, I asked this council to vote to rescind the April 4 approval motion of Resolution 21 on behalf of the city's residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Rebecca McKeich, and then following Ms. McKeich, we have Peter G-O-C, and I can't tell if it's an H or a K, G-O-C-H or K-E-E. Good evening. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca McKeich. I live at 4599 Holly Drive. As a concerned resident of Palm Beach Gardens of nearly 40 years, I am here today to ask you to rescind the motion to approve Resolution 21/2024, made at last month's council meeting on April 4th of this year. My 16-year-old son Dylan, here with me tonight, has been skating at the park for, on a regular basis for 10 years. My older stepson played basketball on those courts all throughout high school. My younger brother used to play baseball on that field before it became the Amanda Buckley Memorial Softball Field. Plant Drive is our city's first public park, and it has history and meaning to so many longtime residents. But my main concern, concern tonight has to do with the effect that the demolition and construction will have on the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as the lack of transparency and public input regarding Resolution 21. No proposed redevelopment signs were posted at the location. No notice of public hearing was given. In fact, most residents, including most of us here tonight, did not even know about it until after the fact. Lilac Street, Holly Drive, and Plant Drive are all 25 mile an hour, two-lane pedestrian-rich, highly residential roads, under the only ingress and egress to the park and the proposed development site. According to Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation's own proposal submitted to you, how would an ice rink that plans to host, quote, "regional, national, and international events affect the traffic in these residential neighborhoods"? Has a detailed traffic analysis been done? Can we see it? Also, in PBNAF's proposal to you is their planned operating hours of 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. How will 18 hours of extra traffic and noise from the ice rink every single day affect the quality of life of those living directly across the street? Has anyone asked them? Did the city? Did PBNAF? This council has made an agreement with PBNAF for 40 years into the future, long after all of you will be gone from those seats, but we and future generations will still be here, living with the effects of the decisions you make now. Many of those decisions have been good for our city, and I thank you for that. This one, in my opinion, is not. And that is why I again ask you to reconsider and rescind the motion to approve Resolution 21 and put it back on the table for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Peter. If you could help me pronounce your name when you come on up. Thank you. Goshay. If you could state your name and address, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Peter Goshay. I live at 4393 Golfer Circle West in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here to talk about the traffic on Lilac Street. We have lovely community resources, like the skate park they're all talking about, pickleball, dog parks, high school. Most of the people running up and down this road are not interested in driving the speed limit at all. It's all at the end of the road, hundreds of cars speed all day, all times of the day, especially in the mornings when pickleball is busy and the school drop-off is going on. I've spoke with Sergeant Moll, Chief Garcia, which both seem to have no answers. They said speed bumps were out of the opportunity, and there's nothing else to slow traffic down. I would just like to see something done to slow people down. There's lights like on Gardens East Boulevard or MacArthur Boulevard, or something to slow people down on the road. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, for coming. We appreciate those comments. Next, we have Edward Stone. After Edward Stone, we have Matthew Vanderpoel.
It's a pleasure to be able to have the opportunity to address you. I've been a-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Edward Stone. I live at 4405 Gardena Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, 33410. I'm deeply concerned about your passage of Resolution 2124, doing away with a skate park and ball field area on Plant Drive. It's a residential area and a school area, and there's no room for a commercial enterprise offering alcoholic beverages within walking distance of the school and churches. That's untenable. It's unconscionable. And I moved to the city of Palm Beach Gardens 33 years ago, and back then, it was not, and I hope still not, the city of Palm Beach businesses. Consider your constituents before outside commercial entities. We're the people that put you in office, and we can be the people that take you out of office. And we don't want to do that, but we don't want our neighborhood compromised with undue traffic that's already heavy in a residential area and doing away with what is a benefit to us for decades. This is a takeaway. This is something that we have, and now we will have not. And it's tailored to a specific use that we would have to pay to go to. It's not what we have now, a public, free, open area to use for recreation. And our children are the biggest parties affected by this. They need, as someone mentioned before, a place to play and exercise without being, playing in the streets in that area. So I would ask you to consider reversing Resolution 2124 accordingly.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Next, we have Matthew Vanderpoel. After Matthew Vanderpoel, we'll have Luke Vanderpoel.
My name is Matthew Vanderpoel. I live at 356 Riverside Drive. I'm here today to represent my other fellows here for Plant Drive Skate Park. On your plaque proclamation here, you have Kids to Park Day, and this, I don't know the numbers and all that, but tearing down Plant Drive Skate Park is kind of an oxymoron to Kids to Park Day. It's a beautiful place. I'm a native. I went to high school at Palm Beach Gardens High School. My son, he's a skateboarder. He's a competitive skateboarder. All his friends, birthday parties there. It's a beautiful park. I also live on Riverside Drive, which is adjacent to MacArthur. The traffic, the infrastructure just isn't built for this type of planning of this hockey rink. It's just too large for that residential community. And I would just like you to reconsider and think about the choices that you have made so far, and think about the children.
Thank you, sir. Now we have Luke Vanderpoel. We can lower that microphone if you'd like, so that he can speak.
Hi. My name is Luke. I am a skateboarder. I am a native of Palm Beach Gardens. I love Plant Drive Skateboard Park. I am a competition skateboarder. I train at Plant Door, Plant Drive. It's a beautiful, peaceful park, and to me, it's home. I can walk, skate, or ride my bicycle there. Tearing down my skate park is a tragedy. Me and all my friends love and enjoy Plant Drive Park. I think, no matter how much money you plan to make, it's not worth the train equity of Plant Drive Skate Park. I like ice skate rinks, but Plant Drive Park is not a good place to destroy to make ice rinks. Thank you. I'm Luke.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for speaking. You did it. All right. I do have a card here for Samantha Marks, but I was told that you do not want to speak. You do want to speak? If you could come to the podium and state your name and address, please. You'll have three minutes. After this, we'll have Edward, E-O-L-E, something. So, I apologize.
Ready? Okay. My name is Samantha Marks. I live at 1001 Pine Lake Circle, and that's in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here speaking tonight in regards to Resolution 21 that was voted at the last council meeting to build a two-story ice rink on city property at Plant Drive Park. I am here to say that I and 2,800 residents that signed the online petition are against this proposal. Many tax-paying residents utilize that park for many of their personal needs, like those here tonight from the skating community, and parents of those children who belong to the skating community. That park is not only city-owned land that you are leasing away to a nonprofit company that called some residents of this city a very unkind name. Plant Drive Park is not just located in the old part of the city or the aging part of the city. It is the heartbeat of this city. Without this part of Palm Beach Gardens, there would be no Signature City. It was home to many of our city's first leaders and their families, who purposely planned this great community around families and their needs, such as schools, churches, and parks, all things that bring communities together. And now, in 2024, these things, these are all things that families are craving from their community. This part of our city is home to teachers, first responders, nurses, small business owners, professionals of all walks of life, but most of all, families. Families who do not want their neighborhoods turned into a traffic nightmare for an ice rink with a bar down the street from their children's school and their home. It will create much unneeded and unwanted cut-through traffic through the neighborhoods that are full of families. I ask you, all of you who serve us, residents that do not live in this section of our city, would you want this in your backyard? Would it add to your quality of life? The answer is no. Why is it okay for any of our city's residents' quality of life to be affected by a project that is better suited in a commercial or industrial space? The ice rink just simply does not belong in a residential area. The answer here is simple. Let's just save the skate park, revitalize and maintain the remaining parts of Plant Drive Park, and find a more fitting location for the ice rink. I thank you all for listening to us here this evening, and thank you to our service for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have Edward, and I apologize, I can't read your handwriting for your last letters there. After that, we have Heather Deitchman Levy.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Edward Dolos. I live at 4905 Midtown Lane, Unit 2410, Palm Beach Gardens. I am a member of the Palm Beach, rather, the Juror Assembly of Palm Beach Garden, of Palm Beach County, but I'm here tonight in my private capacity as a living man on the land. I'm here in support of the community, and I recommend that you put forward a motion to rescind Resolution 21. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Heather Deitchman Levy or Levy, and then after that, we have Dr. Stephen Livingston.
Good evening, council. My name is Heather Deitchman Levy. I live at 3111 Gardens East Drive in Palm Beach Gardens. I will be speaking extremely quickly. We have a thriving city, a strong Parks Department, a full qualified police force, and a council of experienced and intelligent public servants, but I'm here today to ask a member of this council to make a motion to rescind approval of Proposal 2124. Your adherence to Sunshine Law remains unfulfilled, and the council's assessment of the property in question was both biased and disingenuous. Public parks and green spaces should be free, open, and accessible to all Gardens residents and taxpayers, regardless of income level and without prejudice to their chosen sport. First, the proposal's premise that Plant Drive is marginal and underutilized with malcontented people, vandalism, and illegal activities. A Freedom of Information Act request covering January 2022 through March of 2024 told me that Lilac Park, directly across the street from Plant Drive, was deemed worthy of a playground upgrade and investment of 24 pickleball courts despite having four times the number of suspicious vehicles, a 10-to-1 ratio of vehicle burglaries, two acts of vandalism, double the number of suspicious people, and twice the amount of juvenile trouble than Plant Drive, according to your police records. No one publicly has stated that that park was looked at. Further, the Gardens District Park, the original proposed location for the ice rink, has two times the amount of juvenile trouble, two more fires, double the number of suspicious people, 29 problem drivers, including crashes, careless driving, impaired driving, shots fired. Compared to Plant Drive's two car-related issues at the same timeframe, no one proposed that or claimed that that expansion was due to malcontents or illegal activities. Other parks like PGA National and the Tennis Center are not immune either. The difference is, those are tennis courts and not malcontented skaters. To be clear, I am not saying Plant Drive doesn't have police problems and police activity issues. It does. I've seen it. I looked at all of the records. But Plant Drive is seventh out of 11 Palm Beach Garden parks for policing. Secondly, regarding the claim of underutilization, the largest portion of the park is a softball field under lock and key. The pickleball courts were the most popular feature and were recently moved across the street. It is disingenuous to lock up two-thirds of the park, remove the most popular feature, and then claim underutilization, just in time for a proposal to tear down the park. As a reminder, the skate park and basketball courts are utilized daily by a multi-generational community. Excuse me. Finally, the council spent time discussing the unsolicited Statute 287 forbids. That statute requires adherence to Statute 255 as well. There must be a public need for acquisition. To make this PPP legitimate, in circumstance, a foundation doesn't just need an ice rink. The city had to prove that there was an imminent need to acquire. Palm Beach Gardens does not need an ice rink, no matter how much others, including myself, like hockey. The council has not fulfilled the requirements of Statute 255 for this to be valid. There are solutions to solving problems, and a board of educated and experienced council members should be able to come up with them, without handing over our city's green spaces to a private foundation that requires pay-for-play for 40 years.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Stephen Livingston, and after that, we'll have Steve Martino.
Good evening, mayor and council members and fellow residents. My name is Stephen Livingston. I lived at 10271 Alamanda Boulevard for the past 31 years. I feel very strongly about respectfully asking you to reconsider approval of the ice skating rinks at Plant Drive Park. I would like to present an additional critical viewpoint on the ice skating rinks, which is our role in battling climate change. Continuously cooling two or three ice skating rinks in a sweltering South Florida will mean massive new energy usage and a carbon footprint. This is the most energy-intensive use possible. Has the council considered this? A headline in the Palm Beach Post yesterday describes average ocean temperature records have been broken every day this year, primarily caused by worsening greenhouse gas levels. We have already experienced coral bleaching and flooding from sea level rise, and this week, a record week for tornadoes in the United States with 183. The article in the Palm Beach Post concluded by saying, "Experts urge people to do their part in lowering greenhouse gas levels." I think it's critical for our council members to set a good example in preserving the climate and parks for our children, and pleased to reconsider the approval for public ice skating rinks in Palm Beach Gardens. And lastly, because I did note that one of the proclamations on the agenda tonight is regarding Civility Month, I am going to conclude by saying I thank each and every one of you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Steve Martino. After Steve Martino, we have William B. O. N. A. D. I. E. S.
Mayor Reed, council members, my name is Steve Martino, 320 Balsam Street. I've been a resident of the city for 50 years and a taxpayer for the past 20. The last time I was in this chamber that I recall was several years ago during the debate and discussion of the spring training baseball stadium. It was spirited at times, to say the least, several meetings, community forums, workshops, open houses, openness and transparency for all to see. The meetings were mostly standing-room-only, passionate cases made on both sides of the issues, and in the end, in my opinion, both sides won. Palm Beach County is now the spring training home for two teams who are both World Series champions, and the residents of the city of Palm Beach Gardens continue to enjoy a quality of life that they fought so hard to preserve. However, just a few short years later, we found ourselves in quite the juxtaposition. Last month, with little advance notice, the city council placed on the agenda Resolution 21, which calls for the complete demolition of Plant Drive Park, the city's oldest park and one of the city's oldest neighborhoods to be replaced by a two-story, 100,000-square-foot building, complete with two indoor hockey rinks, a bar, and a restaurant. To my knowledge, not one open house, not one community forum, not one workshop, a simple item on the agenda, an extremely brief presentation by staff with very little detail, followed by a 4-0 vote by the council. Within a relatively short amount of time on the evening April 4th, 2024, a 50-year-old park, all of its amenities, completely wiped out, without any consideration for the impacts of the surrounding residents or our way of life, without any input, without any consideration given to our wants, our desires, what we as residents would like to see is the future of Plant Drive Park. In conclusion, I can't help but contemplate the following questions, considering the council just wiped clean any evidence that Plant Drive Park ever existed to begin with. Which publicly-owned park or building is next? What other locations is the city quietly, out of the view of residents, negotiating a similar lease agreement for? When's the next billionaire going to walk through these doors with an unsolicited bid to enter the city into a 40-year lease to demolish a publicly-owned building or park? It's also worth mentioning that the city's parks, the buildings, other amenities, they don't belong to the council, they don't belong to the administration, they don't belong to the staff, and they certainly don't belong to a developer or nonprofit. They belong to the residents. Thank you for the opportunity to express my concern and disappointment with your decision.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. William Bonadie's. I apologize for my pronunciation. After that, we have Helen Brown.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I live, my name is William Bonadie's. I live at 4401 Daffodil Circle South in the Gardens. We've lived here for over 40 years, and we, our children have enjoyed that park immensely. What I consent about was when we heard in the paper that this resolution had passed, we were wondering why it was never even brought to our attention, people who are directly impacted by it. This, this is the meeting that should have been had when you were considering that, that motion, and I'm sorry it had to happen this way. And one thing we've seen on social media is that there were a lot, there were a couple of people who said they were for this rink. Where are they? Are they here? No one's here. They knew this was going to happen. I questioned the marketing survey they did for this rink. Was there a, did they provide you with any information about a survey they've done in the area that said that, yes, it's a crying need for an ice rink in Palm Beach Gardens? The other concern I have is the environmental one, which has often been mentioned before. There are, there are a couple, there are a lot of pine trees in that area. I'm not sure they're going to be torn down by this massive facility. So I would ask you to reconsider this motion and save Plant Drive Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Helen Brown. After Helen Brown, we have Eric Brown.
Well, good evening, council members. My name is Helen Brown. I am an owner and resident at 10160 and 10162 Plant Drive in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask for the removal of Resolution 21. Having reside in this area for over 20 years, I can attest to the Plant Drive, that Plant Drive has always been an integral part of our peaceful residential community. With families and children residing along Plant Drive, Holly, and Lilac Streets, the park has served as a cherished space for recreational activity, including baseball, skateboarding, BMX riding, and softball practice and games for our Palm Beach Gardens team and a tribute to our beloved Amanda Buckley. The current proposal to introduce a full-service bar, restaurant, ice hockey rink raises concern within our community. Our infrastructure is already strained by morning and afternoon traffic from nearby high school, elementary school, and churches. The recent addition of the pickleball courts, dog parks, a walking path, and children's play areas have further increased the congestion. As residents, we sometimes struggle to maneuver our vehicles during this congestion, posing potential challenges for emergency vehicles at such time that it's needed. Moreover, the prospective and increased traffic, noises from the tournament and gatherings at the ice rink, the restaurant-related issues like rodents, the impact on property values are significant and worrisome. The proposed operational hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. could destruct, it definitely will distribute, it's definitely going to disrupt the peaceful evenings that we currently enjoy at dusk, which is a fundamental aspect of why we chose to reside in this area. While I appreciate the initiatives for community engagement and sport facilities, I believe the location and scale of the proposed ice rink and associated amenities are not suitable for our neighborhood. The financial burden on families, coupled with the potential negative impacts on property values and the quality of life, necessitates the thorough recon, I'm sorry, the thorough reconsideration of this resolution. We urge transparency in decision-making processes, particularly as proposed was introduced without adequate public consultation and approval. It is vital that the community has a voice to vote in matters that significantly affect our way of life and the values of our home. I would like to say that I have voted for most of you, because I voted every time that we, that we vote, and I really hope that you take this into consideration, that we live in this area, and this is going to be a tremendous impact to us. We're not complaining about the current traffic, but that is going to bring a significant change to the people that live there, and we're homeowners. It's just not rentals that live there. So we're people that home-own, pay our rent, pay our taxes, and enjoy this lovely community that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have Eric Brown, and then Matthew Wolf.
Hello, my name's Eric Brown, 10162 Plant Drive, and I respectfully request that you consider rescinding Proposition 21. We've lived on that block for 22 years now, and my daughter probably spent almost every day in that park. I taught her to skateboard in that park. I taught her to ride her bicycle in that park. Like the other gentleman said, one thing I'm disappointed, I don't understand why the baseball field is locked. I grew up in Brooklyn, New York, on the baseball field every day. Concrete baseball field, not beautiful manicured grass like we have here. The field is a very important field. It's beautiful. It's much nicer than anything I ever had. It's dedicated to Amanda J. Buckley, and it should not be torn down. Absolutely. The park was recently refurbished. The skateboard park that you're talking about tearing down is practically new. So I don't understand why that money was spent, and now you're going to tear it down. The other question of taking away something that's free for something that has to be paid for to use, I just don't understand that either. And of course, the question of a bar and restaurant. I don't know if any of you guys have ever been on that block. There's two ways in and out, Lilac and Holly, but other than that, because of I-95, there's no other real way in and out, and the traffic is going to be awful. So, I think that's about it. Please, consider another location. There are other places where you could have a bar, you could have ice skating, you could have hockey, but this is absolutely not it. This is a small, quiet residential area that has a beautiful park right across the street, and I know we're not here to take down city parks for private concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Matthew Wolf. After Matthew Wolf, we have John Scott G. Gillo, G-I-L-O, maybe it's a W. Or Gillen, correct. All right.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Wolf, 11752 Cottonwood Avenue, Palm Beach Gardens. Good to see you all. So I'm here, like so many, to voice opposition to the location chosen for the ice rink. I think ice rink is great, just that location is not the best. Parks like that are, so first of all, I'm a native here. I was born at Gardens Hospital. I grew up in the area. I raised my family here. Little parks like that are really important for the neighborhood kids. It's a place they can go, they can ride their bike, they can walk. When my wife was raising my little kid, they'd walk to the park. They've been to that park many times. Those types of things are dwindling, and those are what makes the quality of life good here. And so when you replace it with something big, like the hockey, hockey rink, that's going to cost a lot of money that kids can't just go to on their own without their parents, that's a disservice to the community. It really degrades the quality of life for, for families that are growing. And so that's, that's why my opposition to tearing that park down, it's really important. And that brings a couple of tough questions. One was, yeah, it wasn't brought up for public discussion. Why? Would anyone like to answer, why wasn't this brought to the public for some feedback, for some discussion? I mean, can?
Right now, sir, you're able to say anything you want to us for three minutes, as long as it's about the city. We are not going to do a debate or question and answer. Our job right now is to listen.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. My other question was going to be, I understand the contract is signed, fair enough, but contracts can be broken. I don't know what the penalty is for breaking that contract, or maybe there's a way we can find a win-win to move it to another location. There's got to be some way we can save those parks, because it's, save that park, because it's really important, and that's my point. There's so many other good points, I won't reiterate what's been said, because there are great points as well. So that's what I came to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have John Scott, and I apologize, I can't read your last name. It looks like a G-I-L-O something. And then we have Kyle Johnson after that.
My name is John Scott Gillo. I live at 738 Duchess Court, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I'm here for the, because of the approval of Resolution 2124. I grew up in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I played, I played ice hockey from the age six till well mid into my twenties. When I moved here to Florida, I became a USAA hockey referee and reffed hockey at multiple rinks here in South Florida. In all my 20-plus years of playing hockey, I've been to over 100 rinks. Do you know what all those rinks have in common? None of them were in residential areas. They were all in commercial or industrial areas, due to the size of the building needed for just one sheet of ice, not to mention two sheets of ice. Today, I'm an avid bicyclist, bicyclist. Me and my girlfriend, also a Palm Beach Gardens resident, visit Gardens Skate Park often. We are such avid bikers, we started a bike business called Draco Bikes. It started in our garage at 738 Duchess. It has now grown to a brick-and-mortar store in downtown Abacoa. In, in that business store, we talked to many residents of Palm Beach Gardens and Jupiter. When we refer them to a skate park, even though the Jupiter Skate Park is in my backyard and I can throw a skateboard and hit it, I still refer them to go to Gardens Skate Park. Why do I refer to Gardens Skate Park? Because there's no cost to get into it. It's not limited to days for what bikes can go ride, like Jupiter is. It used to be. It is no longer. It's great for kids of all levels and all ages. Speaking of the fact that I've played hockey for many years and reffed hockey for many years, do you guys know what adult hockey is called here in Florida? It may be called adult hockey, but everybody on the ice calls it beer league. After the games, they're in the parking lot drinking beer, not to mention a bar on top of that, where there's liquor. It's going to be twice the problems. Go to Palm Beach Skate Zone, where they have night games, they skate at 11 o'clock at night sometimes. If you go to those parking lots anywhere from 10 to midnight, you'll see people sitting in the parking lots drinking. This residential area cannot handle that type of traffic. That's all I have to say. I ask that you do rescind Resolution 2124. Thank you.
Please don't, we have, please don't. We have so many cards. I want everyone to have the opportunity to speak. Please don't clap, don't cajole, whether it's a speaker who's here from the public, show them respect. If it's a council member, please, just let's get through this so that everyone gets their three minutes. Every time we have to stop the meeting, we're losing time. All right? Let's just focus on your, your comments, which is what we're here to listen to. Next, we have Kyle Johnson. After that, we have Amanda Tice, and again, please, no comments, clapping, or cajoling. Is Kyle Johnson here? All right, Amanda Tice, if you could come up, you'll have three minutes. If you could state your name and your address, please. After that, we'll have Eli Weeks.
Thank you very much, and thank you, council members, for hearing us all out. I am, my name is Amanda Tice, as we said. I live at 705 Laurel Drive. I am a single mom with a nine-year-old son, and the skate park has become really important to us. It's been a place for my son to get exercise, to, if you know today, it's day and age, it's hard to get kids outside, and this is, this is an activity that he actually really has come to enjoy. We've gone to that skate park. It's free, which is really important for a lot of families, and he's met a lot of friends for the skate park. What I thought was really amazing about this skate park is that it was multi-generational. You would see tiny little kids to even adults, to even older adults that are there, and they all were very friendly, very kind. Anytime that he's fallen, he's had people come over and make sure he's okay. Like, this is a place for community, and it breaks my heart to see a place of community be taken away. I have no issues with having a hockey rink. It's great. It's more opportunities for us to get together, but for a pay-to-play that you to get together, but for a pay-to-play situation, it's harder for other families. And we're taking away something that's heavily used. Every time that we've gone to that skate park, there was a lot of families there, every time. So I'm, it's definitely utilized. I've been to other parks where it's underutilized, but this park was, is vibrant. I moved down here from Orlando six years ago, and one of the things that really drew me to this area was the fact there were, there were parks that were not pay-to-play. In Orlando, they have nothing but commercial parks. There's very, very few parks that are available for communities and families. I would think that Palm Beach Gardens would wanna uphold the family and community's values when we're looking at, at issues like this. So I respectfully ask that you reconsider Resolution 21. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Next, we have Eli Weeks. After Eli Weeks, we have Ryan Driggers.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Eli Weeks, my address is 7829 North Fork Drive. I'm here to talk about Plant Drive Park. In January, me and my girlfriend started skating. Plant Drive Park was a big reason why we started skating. It's an amazing park that we have here in Palm Beach Gardens. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the community that we have there. There's a man named Kyle, he's here in the audience. He donated, just as soon as I started skating, he started talking to me, started teaching me tricks. He donated me some shoes and some wheels, 'cause I didn't have the best shoes and I didn't have the best wheels for my skateboard. So he donated that to me, and that was a big factor of why I started skateboarding. One of the things I wanna talk about was the high school right behind the park. A lot of those kids, when they get out of school, they go right to the park, and that's, that's like home to them. They go there every day. One of the other things I wanna talk about was the, I mean, obviously, I'm here for the skate park. Basketball courts, they can be found elsewhere. The softball field, they can be found elsewhere. There's not many good skate parks that we have around here. Jupiter's here, but it costs money. We don't, it's not like we can go right down the road and find another great skate park like we have here. It's the only skate park in Palm Beach Gardens, and I, we love that park and we really want it to stay. In the past few months that I've been skateboarding, I've been going down from Miami to Orlando, going to different skate parks, and what we have here in Gardens really is special to skateboarders. And any skateboarder or biker you ask will tell you how nice this park is that we have here. Like I said, this, this park is a big reason why I started skateboarding, and for future generations that have this park, it just, this is where skateboarders and bikers and all that are born, at these type of parks. So we really ask that you keep it. The last thing I wanna leave you guys with, I just hope you guys take, just a look in the audience at everyone here that loves this park, and reconsider your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ryan Driggers. After Ryan Driggers, we'll be Angelo Campadino. Good evening.
Good evening, board. My name is Ryan Driggers, I'm a resident of 126 Parkwood Drive in Royal Palm Beach, Florida. I graduated from the Sports Management Magnet in Palm Beach Gardens High School. I've served as a precinct leader of the area of 6116, and I'm proud owner of the Property and Casualty Insurance Agency. I come before you today as an advocate of the Plant Drive Skate Park. Skateboarding is now an Olympic sport, not only offers valuable lessons, but also fosters athleticism, creativity, and community engagement among our youth. In contrast, ice skating holds its own merits, it does not pose the same cultural relevance and impact on our younger generation. Palm Beach Gardens does not need an ice skating rink. From where I'm standing, I can drive to two ice skating rinks. One is 15 minutes away, the other one's 25 minutes away from where I stand exactly. That's Palm Beach Ice Works and Palm Beach Skate Zone. I know adding a bar next to the high school is a bad idea. When people go to the bar, they leave drunk and are 10 times more likely to crash than someone with a 0% of blood alcohol content. Imagine a 21-year-old leaving the new bar drunk, because that's why people go to the bar, right? And hits and kills a young high schooler who's walking home from maybe practice or a game. I used to walk home all the time. Had a friend that actually passed away in high school from a drunk driver. That would be your fault for not doing your diligence and not reconsidering your decision. I'm an insurance agent, warning you of the dangers and liability of adding a bar next to a high school, that what, warning you of the liabilities of adding a bar next to the high school will eventually cause. With that being said, skateboarding is healthier for the community than bars and restaurants. Therefore, I urge the board not to vote in favor of adding another bar, instead considering adding money to Plant Drive Park and improving the parks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Angelo Campadino, I apologize if I'm in a, Campadino, pardon me. After that, we have Robert Minkowitz. If you would be prepared to come up to give your comments.
Good evening to you all. Just wanna start off by thanking the council for listening to everyone's concerns tonight. My name is Angelo Campadino, and I live at 729 Huckleberry Lane in nearby North Palm Beach. And although it isn't in Palm Beach Gardens, for my son, Plant Drive Park is only quick skateboard right away. I would like to state that for the record, I'm not opposed to development of an ice rink or hockey or ice skating or the Gretzky Foundation or anything like that. However, I am opposed to demolition of an area that, for many skateboarders like my son, provides a unique, open, fun, and safe space for them to play and practice their sport. The nearest skate park is several miles away from my understanding, it's also not free from what I've heard. And in this day and age where people complain about today's youth being too introverted and attached to their phones, to take away a free space that gives them the opportunity to exercise and play and express themselves in the open air, in place of an ice skating rink that no one has asked for, seems unfair and counterintuitive. Skateboarding is highly popular, and it, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, is also an Olympic sport now, with more and more kids and adults learning to ride every day. I would argue that instead of investing in hockey, we invest more in a sport with an already existing infrastructure. With that being said, I'm asking the city to rescind their approval of Proposal 21, and at very least, keep the skate park where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Robert Minkowitz. After that, we have Mike Sheridan.
Robert Minkowitz, 1843 Cathy Lane, Unincorporated, Palm Beach County, still. Your skate bar park plans are sadly similar to your annexation plans. You spend lots of time and money making plans behind closed doors, then did the least amount of information sharing with the public as possible. Then you ignored all opposition to your plans and went ahead. You created a lot of fear and anxiety among a lot, a lot of people. Lucky for me, your annexation plans were overwhelmingly defeated. Sadly, your own residents have been denied the same opportunity to stop you, stop your skateboard park plans. You're being really bad leaders. You're acting like greedy, sneaky, arrogant bullies. I have no hope or expectation that as a group or individuals, you'll change your ways. But I do hope the voters of Palm Beach Gardens will oppose all the bad things you're doing and vote you out of office. God bless America.
Next up, we have, if I can...
After that, it'll be Tab Texter.
How are we doing today, council? Thank you for being here. My name is Mike Sheridan. I live at 910 North J Street in Lake Worth, Florida. I am originally from New Jersey, and I've been riding BMX bikes for 29 years. And the importance of a skate park goes beyond all of us in this room. The people that go to these places, one, have you guys ever been to probably a skate park? Maybe for a ribbon cutting. But I'm actually there a lot. And I throw BMX jams and contests all over Florida, New York, and New Jersey. And the kids that are behind me, even the adults, a lot of them, those kids, if you talk to them one-on-one, when you're at that skate park, a lot of those kids don't wanna be on this planet because they get picked on at school, and they wanna kill themselves. But when they go to that skate park, and they feel free, and they feel accepted, and somebody in this crowd has their back and shows them a new trick, and what life is about, and a community of people who come from all walks of life. There is no racism, there is no nothing. No one's showing them how to chug a beer or hit somebody at a skate park. It's like, we're gonna show you how to do a bar spin, or a flare, or a kickflip, or anything like that. It is a building of, of confidence, of in self, and communication skills. Everything could be taught from somebody else, because somebody taught us how to be a person and to treat other people. And that is very important in a skate park, 'cause everybody here wants to be at the skate park. We can do a lot more for the skate park, you know? Even the basketball courts, the softball courts, that whole thing. Nobody cares about hockey down here. You know what I mean? But the reality is that we shouldn't take away something that is, already has so much of a community as a whole, to take it away, to put something else there that we're causing alcohol. This whole state drinks. We need another place to drink? Go to City Place, go somewhere else. It doesn't make sense to me. You know what I mean? I work in a mental health facility. If we brought as many people in there who have drug and alcohol abuse and mental health because they don't wanna live on this earth, and we're gonna provide a place for people that beat each other up on a hockey rink, and then we're gonna drink afterwards? That doesn't make sense to me. We already have a community of people who have peace, who come together and uplift each other. You know what I mean? That, that's what this is all about. It's not about me, it's about the kids, the next generation. A lot of these people are gonna be sitting in your seats, too. You know what I mean? We don't know who's in this room yet, but we're gonna take away something that is amazing. So please don't...
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Next, we have Tab Texter, and then after that, we have Fane Loesman.
Good evening, sir. If you could come to the microphone, state your name and address. My name is Tab Brenton Allen Texter Jr., my legal name. I go by Tab Texter, so I wanna make sure we get that legally. I lived in Palm Beach Gardens for many years, and now, 8403 Southeast Woodmere Street, Hobbs Sound, Florida. Brother family lives up there, too, but I'm coming back, looking for a place now. World number one skateboarding, and global in 50 and over, I built a second skate park in the United States of America. One of the unique things about this park is, a lot of kids can use it. If you have five bowls and 50 people, only five use it at a time. Well, same thing with hockey. There's only so many people and so many events that you can have that would oversuperpack this, but if I can give you a little bit of my resume, senior commercial appraiser, $10 billion Palm Beach County, every square inch. I was the expert in bowling alleys, the IBM Pratt &amp; Whitney, the West Palm Beach Auditorium, they took that away. Did anybody forget this? Unless you've been here long enough, I've been here since I was eight years old, and I am the same guy that has taught hundreds and thousands of kids. One of my best friends is Zion Wright, Alex Argenti, these are Olympians. I'm a little too old to run for the Olympics, but I actually serve 50 to 70-foot waves. And the way I got that good and got my longevity this long was that I had a place to skate, which is cross-training for these things, that we uniquely have in a radius in Palm Beach County, to this specific location that is very safe for all kids. I'm probably gonna do another skate park which is worth millions of dollars that will be on an Olympic level. They already have that, they have these other skidings, but if you went to try to go, you could all ask me, and we should've been able to go through the process with them, through me and through you, for an expert like me, I stand in Hurricanes, Aquaman would drown where I go. And when I'm on skate, this is true, he's just an actor in my brother's movies, Transformers, Bad Boys, Pirates of the Caribbean, Tron, Thor. So there's actually people like me that are there and have seen these things in evolution, but as an expert for the port of Palm Beach and the overcapacity that that could create to those under traffic. The traffic in and out of this place is impossible, and I don't know how, 'cause I just, just found out about this, but I think I would have the right to not only ask, request, but demand, sorry, 35 seconds. Everybody knows I talk too much, but if you want an expert to talk to you, and I think you should've demanded it somehow, I can't believe I didn't hear about it. You shouldn't have found who I am, because I will tell you that it's overcapacity and you can't get in and out that many people in that area through those two roads. So I'm the one who did Pratt &amp; Whitney, IBM, I did all the marinas in Palm Beach County. The over, overcapacity at Love and the inlet. I did every single restaurant. Rybaovich Marina, $10 billion, it's in my brain. I did Donald Trump's house, in terms of the coding and values in Palm Beach County. It's gonna be a problem. And it, and I'm actually gonna not only ask, but...
If you could summarize your...
Request to get ahold of me, and I will show you what this will cost and the impact, which is negative to the entire community, and the highest and best use...
We do, I'm sorry, sir, we still have more cards.
I'm the number one expert for Palm Beach County in highest and best use. And this is way over capacity. And if I can't, I'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, we have Fane Loesman.
Good evening, Fane Loesman, 991, I'm gonna say 5101 North Ocean Drive, Riviera Beach. I'm gonna preface my comments about the park first, and then I'll get to the reason I got here. We fought a big battle where they wanted to take the Riviera Beach Marina and make it into a boatyard. People complained to the council, didn't get anywhere. We had a referendum. I was one of the funders of the referendum. It went on the ballot, you gather the signatures, and the referendum passed, and there's no boatyard now at the Riviera Beach Marina. The reason I came here is I'm a member of the First Amendment Foundation Sunshine Brigade. First Amendment Foundation publishes the Sunshine Manual in conjunction with the Attorney General. What we do is, the members of the brigade, we identify, or people bring it to our attention, city councils that, and commissions that violate the sunshine law or violate the First Amendment. The rules of decorum that are on your consent agenda, which doesn't necessarily have public comments, that's why I'm making them now, are unconstitutional. That's a pretty serious offense to say something's unconstitutional, because you all raised your right hands to uphold the Constitution of the United States. You, respectfully, Mayor, you cannot direct a police officer to remove anybody from this podium because you don't like the content of their speech. The police officers in the back there, they have to make an independent decision that a law is being broken. For example, disorderly conduct. If somebody comes up here during an agenda item and they go off topic, you're talking about building a new road, and they're talking about the park, that's disorderly conduct. You can have them, you can bring it to the police officer's attention, and he can make an independent decision to remove them from the meeting. If somebody goes beyond three minutes, if somebody screams words, you can remove them. If somebody uses profanity, you cannot remove them. Profanity is protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution. So these rules, and I've reviewed them, are unconstitutional. What are you gonna do about it? If you go ahead and enforce those rules and you pass that on the consent agenda, you're breaking the law. That opens you up to challenge, to a legal challenge, whether the First Amendment Foundation would do the legal challenge or not, I don't know, but anybody in this room could do it. I could do it. What other issues are, are there in those rules? If I wanna say the city attorney doesn't know what he's talking about, and I wanna criticize him, criticism is protected under the Constitution. If I think an individual's corrupt or has been corruptly influenced, I can discuss that. You cannot, all you can do is enforce rules of time, but you can't enforce rules of content. That needs to be rewritten. Somebody should direct the city attorney to go back, see how other communities do it, and bring it back. What you're doing now, if you pass that consent agenda item, you're violating the First Amendment, you raise your right hand to uphold the laws of this country, I would caution you not to proceed forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time. All right, that wraps up public comment. We do appreciate everyone, whether you're a resident or non-resident, that did come to speak tonight. You're going, what you heard, what you said was heard. You need to allow time for council to make a consideration. This is, these are not things that happen overnight or instantaneously. I would encourage you to stick around, there will be a few other presentations you may find of interest, and right now, we're gonna move on to our city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I would like to, at this time, call Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Director. She has an update on her activities regarding the facilities at Plant Drive Park.
Good evening, council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator...
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. Want to give you an update on some communication that we've had with the high school and also with Barbara Buckley concerning the Field of Dreams. First of all, I'll start with the high school. We've met with the principal, and we've met with the athletic director, and we've talked about the field that is at Plant Drive Park. Through that conversation, we learned from them that they actually prefer that the softball field that is on school property be revitalized and used. It is a hardship for the school administration. Every time they go off campus, they actually have to send an administrator to do that. So for them to have it back on their campus is their desire. The softball program, at one point in this community, was very large. This year, they only have a varsity team. They believe if they have a premier facility on their campus, that they would attract more girls to come play because they could see what was going on. But also honoring Amanda Buckley and bringing the Field of Dreams there, they told us that they believe, you know, what she accomplished in her softball career, and then, you know, had the potential to move forward with a full-ride scholarship to go to college, would also be a motivator for other girls to come play the game. We have been speaking with them since, you know, the articles came out in the Palm Beach Post months ago, so they understood that the city was gonna honor their need for a softball field, and we've had those conversations with them. Also, the high school site, if you're familiar with it at all, has a full-fledged locker room and concession stand, which is something that we currently don't have at Plant Drive. So in speaking with them, we're looking at trying to help them make this happen. I also want to share with you about the Field of Dreams. I personally spoke with Barbara Buckley. We had a very nice meeting, a couple laughs about Tori, her husband, shed a few tears over her daughter, I knew her daughter also, and she said she appreciated the invite to come to a meeting, and she said she understood about what the high school, where they're at. She shared with me, because I asked the question, would you like to be a part of it? Would you like to see a new dedication? And she indicated no. She's a very private woman. I promised her that I would keep in touch with her, let her know how things developed, but she does things on her own. I know she visited the park after we met. I've talked to her again this week about two dedication trees that are at the park that we will make sure gets reinstated. But keeping our commitment to the high school and to honor the Field of Dreams, our city staff has already went over to the facility at the high school site. They've done an evaluation. Cory and Andrew, who run our park system, they're experts. They've gone out there, they've turned on the irrigation, they've met with the maintenance staff, they're starting to put together, you know, just their thoughts on how to make that a premier facility. We will continue to work with the high school and Ms. Buckley through this whole period. Once again, that contract was the start. There's still milestones that need to be met, there's time, and we will keep them in loop. But I wanted you to be updated on what we've done as far as outreach. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Will the school allow the field to be named after Amanda, kinda like the Field of Dreams that we have now?
Yes. Yes, the intention is that they would like to bring the Field of Dreams there. The bricks that are out front, that the foundation paid for, the scoreboard could be removed or relocated. A lot of the amenities can be moved to the high school site. One thing I do want to mention, Barbara shared with me, that they have disbanded the Give a Child a Smile Foundation. They just did that recently. There's been a decrease on people who are asking for scholarship money or, you know, the raising of funds. So again, that has gone away, but anything that the foundation did that we can move from Plant Drive to the school, we will help facilitate that. But they welcome the Field of Dreams being there.
Any other questions from council? Comments?
Thank you, Charlotte. Next, I'd like to call our city engineer, Todd Engel. Todd Engel, talk about a new roundabout.
Good evening, Council. Todd Engel, city engineer. We have an upcoming project, Fairchild Gardens in Fairchild Drive, that also connects into Legacy Place. We're gonna construct a roundabout in this location. The project was originally scheduled to take about five months, because we have to close certain sections at a time to try to keep the area circulated working, but we're proposing to actually shut this area down for 30 days. 30 days only, we'll work six days a week, shut the entire intersection down, open it up 30 days later, completely done. So our disruption will only be for 30 days and not five months, as the project goes on. What that would look like is, we would shut down the roadways in these areas here. It would affect Legacy Place, which has three other exits, Legacy Place Condos, which has two exits, and the United States Post Office, which has their public directionally come in here and then come back out to Fairchild Gardens, and their employees and mail deliveries come in from the back from Fairchild, and they can get on Campus Drive. So with your permission, we'd like to shut this down for 30 days to expedite this project. We'll start after school closes, and it'll be open well before school starts.
Just basically give you the information that this intersection will be closed for that maintenance, and to put it into the public record that this project will be shutting down the intersection for 30 days.
And we'll do the signs right? So 30 days prior to, we'll have signage out there that it's closing on a certain date?
Yes. We typically do two weeks beforehand, before we shut down a road in its entirety, so the signage will be there well ahead of time. We don't have the exact date yet, but once we get the date, we'll get the signage out and notify the local businesses.
And it won't impact any of the traffic in and out of the post office at all?
No. They go directional from one side, the public side, and then their employees will go to the back and head to Campus Drive.
I just want to say, I'm in favor of shutting it down to get it done as quickly and efficiently as possible, because we've seen what you guys have done with Shady Lakes, and, you know, in two months, you built an entire roadway, meeting all of the, you know, Green Book standards, and extremely well, so we know you can do it extremely well, and we appreciate that done being very efficiently. And especially because it's non-season, I think it's appropriate to do so as well. So I would totally be in favor of that. Do we need to make a motion? Okay.
Thank you.
Next, I'd just like to inform you that this past week, and the Little Mo's Eastern Regional Tennis Tournament was held on Saturday at our tennis facility. There were 280 players, ages eight to 12, from 23 different states. Top four players in each age division will move on to the Nationals in September in Austin, and they'll be back here in December. It's always a heartwarming event, a great opportunity for the children to compete, and we're very proud of that and feel very good about it. So it's something we do every year, but it's a great event. So with that, you know, often, you don't get the opportunity to see a lot of the things that go on, because there's so much going on in this city at the same time. And I know sometimes this is a thankless job that you have up here. So in the effort to bring a little levity to the meeting tonight, and give you an opportunity to see some of the fun things that go on around here, I'd like to call Chief Pape up to the podium, so he can explain to you what you're about to see.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm gonna talk to you about an officer that went above and beyond. Officer Ralph Bradley does a lot of details at White School, and he created the Police Officer of the Day. The Police Officer of the Day started last school year as part of the White School's annual fundraising event. It originally started with teacher for a day, but since Officer Ralph Bradley was at the school so much because he works many of the details, they asked him if he would participate in the auction and help raise money for the school. As with any auction, whoever is the highest bidder gets the prize. The winner of the Police Officer for the day experience for two years in a row has been Riker Essie, a five-year-old who loves police officers and firefighters. Officer Essie and Officer Bradley started the day enjoying a donut and an iced cup of coffee, although his was filled with milk. Officer Bradley showed the student all the tools and equipment in his police car, and also coordinated with Officer John, one of our finest motor officers, to bring his unit to show the kids and teachers, to bring his motorcycle so they could see it up close. After they patrolled the school, issued some tickets for speed walkers and runners, loud yelling in classrooms, and some parking violations. In addition, Officer Bradley presented the student with a shadow box containing police patches, challenge coins from our department and surrounding agencies as a gift, and he did that all on his own. It was an awesome day for Officer Essie, and all the teachers and students really engaged with him and made it such an enjoyable experience. I want to show you Officer Ralph Bradley clearly went above and beyond. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I hope that put a smile on your face. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next is our consent agenda. Are we pulling anything from the agenda tonight? All right, so may I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Middleton. May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Woods, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our quasi-judicial hearings. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Resolution 27, 2024, site plan approval for Pod 11 within Avenir. Resolution 28, 2024, approval for an exterior tenant sign for Tap 42 Craft Kitchen &amp; Bar. Resolution 29, 2024, approval for an exterior tenant sign for Tommy Bahama Marlin Restaurant. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the time of the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card and give it to our city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Thank you all, and thank you all for your patience this evening. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 27, 2024, resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for 137 lot residential single-family home subdivision located northwest of the intersection of Avenir Drive and Coconut Boulevard on approximately 50.72 acres known as Pod 11, within the residential district parcel A of the Avenir Plan Community Development, PCD, which is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapefruit Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Let's start with some ex parte. We'll start over here with Councilmember Tinsley.
Just Rosa Schechter from Avenir.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on.
None for me.
Primorosa, and Vice Mayor Middleton, and Councilmember, okay. I have none myself, so let's go ahead. I see that we have our presentation available from Mr. Kentuma. Good evening.
Good evening, Kentuma, with Urban Design Studio. I've been sworn in. My address is 610 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. What is in front of you this evening is Pod 11. Pod 11 is, there are only two other parcels in Avenir after this. So what is in front of you this evening is 137 units on 65-foot wide lots that are 130 feet deep and 140 feet deep. My presentation this evening will be very shortened, and we will walk our way through this in just three or four slides, hopefully. So you're all familiar with Avenir and its location and its approval for the PCD. On the screen in front of you in the red oval is the location of the subject site in front of you this evening. It is Pod 11, located again in the northeast, right here in the oval, and I'll identify it a little clearer here on this screen. The request in front of you is a request for 72 homes on 65-foot lots by 140, and 65-foot homes on 65-foot lots by 130. We've met all the open space requirements significantly above both the open space requirements. There is a large amount of on-street parking spread throughout the community. To create guest parking while not required by your code is additional parking spread throughout the community. There are two access points to the subject site. This is Avenir Drive, for a frame of reference, and this is Coconut here on the left-hand side of the screen. This is a full intersection. The main resonant entrance gate here on the right-hand side is a full intersection, the ability to take a left turn in, right turn out, full intersection. Up here in the northwest corner of the site is an emergency ingress point and an egress point for the entire community. So in other words, fire trucks can pull in, and all cars can pull out and take a right turn and go north on Coconut. So that's the access to the site. It meets all the criteria for stacking and storage in regards to the guardhouse and all the entry features being proposed. I did forget to mention in my presentation, what is in front of you today is only the horizontal site plan. The vertical elements, the guardhouses, the gate, the architecture will come in the future, and it has been submitted to the city, is in the process of review. A little more detail on the access, a full intersection here identified on the screen, there's a mail kiosk. There's a, there are, there's a mail kiosk spread throughout the community. There are the required community amenities, as you know, within Avenir. A .75 acre park is located within a certain distance of each home. Those parks and tot lots are spread throughout the community. You'll note the tot lot here in the bottom right-hand corner. The surface here will be rubber mulch for that area, consistent with what has been approved on all the other Avenir sites. Adjacent to the north is Pod 9. Pod 9 is the Pod, I don't know the marketing name, but it's owned by Akel Development. That has a 28-foot wide buffer on it today. It also has a wall on top of that buffer. We're proposing an additional 12-foot buffer to make that separation between that community. Around the balance of the property, the buffers are consistent with the rest of Avenir, a 40-foot wide landscape buffer in the road, and then an additional 15-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the roadway. On the east side, this is a Toll Brothers project called Regency. This is a, the buffer here is the lake itself, and there are landscape plantings throughout that area, and additional plantings that were part of the Toll Brother project. On the screen in front of you are the required landscaping points. The street tree here is the Eagleston Holly. You'll note that we are almost double on the required landscaping points. The site plan in front of you again this evening has a significant amount of open space. We do have your staff recommendation of approval. There are no waivers in front of you this evening. Our request is to request your approval this evening. We also have your planning board, your planning and zoning board approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Tuma. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
Madam Mayor, nothing else to add to the presentation. Staff and planning and zoning board recommend approval of this petition.
Okay, excellent. And we don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Looking for a motion and a second on Resolution 27, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I'll move Resolution 27, 2024.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
So many seconds? All right, and Vice Mayor Middleton got the second. So do we have any further discussion, questions, comments, or otherwise?
I just have one, and I'll keep it very brief. Thank you. In my agenda review, I asked about the ground cover for the park, the tot lot in specific, and you answered the question. And I do want to say thank you for providing on-street parking. That is always a bone of contention in every plan development, and I appreciate you including them, adding them around in the, around the entire circle, and if you can squeeze anymore in, I'm all for it during final site plan. Thank you.
All right, that sounds great. So let's go ahead and call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously, Resolution 27. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you, Ken. All right, we'll move along to Resolution 20, excuse me, Resolution 28, 2024. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 28, 2024, resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous petition for an exterior tenant signed for TAP 42 craft kitchen and bar within the Gardens Mall Plan Unit Development, PUD. The Gardens Mall PUD being located on the north side of PGA Boulevard approximately 0.2 miles east of Fairchild Gardens Avenue, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing effective date, providing for one waiver and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open the hearing, and we'll start with ex parte down there with, okay, Marcy?
None.
All right?
None.
All right, same here, no ex parte for me. So we have Kenneth, I'm not doing well with people's last names tonight, I am so sorry. If you would, from Northborough Builders, if you'd pronounce your name for me, sir.
Sir, my name is, my name is Kenneth Nahigian.
Okay.
And I acknowledge that I have been duly sworn.
Thank you, sir.
I am the chief operating officer for Northborough Builders, who is currently building the TAP 42 in Palm Beach Gardens Mall. The kitchen, craft kitchen and bar is located in the mall on the exterior on the PGA Boulevard, Boulevard side of the mall. The photo on your left is the building when we took it over to begin construction, and on your right is a progress photo since then has been added, some very beautiful landscaping. This is the view from the parking lot driving in, the top photo. It's TAP 42 craft kitchen and bar. We are asking that this sign be approved. The bottom photo does not have a sign. It is on what was formerly Sears side, on the right side of the building. The sign itself is about 15 feet long. The tap letters are 18 inches high. The logo of 42 is 24 inches in diameter, and then the craft kitchen and bar are seven inches high. It is a black and white sign that is internally illuminated. The sign itself meets all of the code requirements. We are here because of Resolution 62, 1984, Section 6, to allow the addition of this sign onto the mall's exterior, but we do meet the general code for Palm Beach. We hope that and intend that this sign will create visibility for the restaurant and assist in wayfinding as people enter, and the mall in connection has committed to install two level-two electric vehicle chargers, charging stations within two years. And again, the sign is compatible with code. And then on April 9th, 2024, I appeared in these chambers to the zoning, and they approved unanimously to accept the sign.
Thank you, sir.
And I respectfully ask that you do as well.
Excellent. All right, we appreciate your presentation. Riva and Ally, do we have a presentation from staff this evening?
No, ma'am, no additional comments, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, we appreciate that. So let's go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 28, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's bring it back for discussion. Do we have questions, comments, otherwise?
No.
Straightforward. That's always good. All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Welcome to Palm Beach Gardens. We can't wait to see the sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to Resolution 29. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 29, 2024, resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous exterior wall sign for the Tommy Bahama Marlin Bar and Restaurant at the Gardens Mall Plan Unit Development, PUD. Gardens Mall PUD being located on the north side of PGA Boulevard approximately 0.2 miles east of Fairchild Gardens Avenue, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to go ahead and open the hearing, and we'll start ex parte with Carl tonight.
Negative.
All right? No?
None.
None? And Marcy?
None.
All right, I have none either, so, hey, it's Kentuma.
Good evening, Kentuma with Urban Design Studio here today on behalf of Tommy Bahama Marlin Bar and also the Gardens Mall. Thank you for having me. As the gentleman indicated a few minutes ago, very similar request in front of you. This is for the Tommy Bahama Marlin Bar. What is in front of you this evening are two waivers. The first waiver is to allow a sign, the way the Gardens Mall works, and when it was originally approved in 1984, the signage was really only intended for the major tenants, and what this is requesting just what's occurred on all the other restaurants, allowing for a sign on the restaurant. The second waiver is, the way that the structure is constructed, there's an accessory structure, there's an overhang, and the code does not allow you to hang a sign on the overhang, so that is our request. And very quickly, just a couple of quick slides, you're familiar with the location. Tommy Bahamas has been there for over 20 years, located by Sex Fifth Avenue. Here is a view of the beautiful area for the Marlin Bar and all the approvals to get it to where it is today. And this is the proposed sign within your code criteria. It meets all the requirements of your code. It is internally lit, and the signage meets all the criteria today. And it is hanging on the side of the accessory structure. That is the reason for our waiver. Justification for the waiver includes better visibility, and also we are create, also the Gardens Mall has indicated they will be providing electrical chargers. Thank you for your time this evening. We have your staff recommendation approval. We have your planning board recommendation approval, and appreciate your approval this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you so much. Do we have a staff presentation tonight, Martin?
Madam Mayor, we have no additional presentation, but staff does recommend approval of the petition with the two waivers.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's, we don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I have a motion and a second for Resolution 29, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 29, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All right, any discussion or questions from the council?
No.
Let's bring it to vote. Oh, I'm so sorry, Carl, yeah.
Sorry, stupid question. Is there a way we can change the code so this little stuff doesn't have to come in front of council on, especially because the mall's going to be so fluid, and they're changing all the time, and now with Sears going to be whatever it's going to be? Can we do something about this so we don't have to have these presentations and you can just, you know, get it through P&amp;Z and you guys approve the rest of it?
We've had discussions with the mall's ownership and their legal counsel to work on that very thing. I don't know the timeline of it yet, but we have suggested some modifications to them.
I don't feel so stupid after all. Okay, thank you.
There are no stupid questions, Carl.
Well, when you're up here, you're supposed to know everything, so.
No, I guess not.
I find I know nothing.
Anything else, anyone else? That was great. All right, let's call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We'll all be able to find it. Moving along to Resolution 32. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 32, 2024, resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and ratifying a memorandum of understanding with the police benevolent association to amend the current collective bargaining agreement at Article 32 salaries with regard to all city police officers, sergeants, and communications operators, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Sorry, I apologize. Thank you so much. We have Cheryl Stewart, our HR guru from administration. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Cheryl Stewart, human resource administrator here with Chief Pape. Currently, we have a three-year contract with the PBA, which began in October of 2022, and it's effective through September 30th of 2025. Provides for salary adjustments each year of the contract, and this October, we'll be entering the third year of that contract. As you know, it's been city's policy to maintain our policies to be within the top three to five of local comparable law enforcement agencies in Palm Beach County. However, this, our labor market has continued to dramatically change, which has been, again, impacting our recruitment and retention of our police officers. Since January of 2023, for example, we've had different levels of officers leaving our organization. Since the beginning of this current fiscal year, we've had 11 officer recruitments, and our, we have various different primary competitors in our, in our area, primarily PBSO and on occasion Palm Beach School Board. So aware of these conditions, what the city proactively decided to do was to offer our bargaining unit employees a special compensation package that would, in addition to provide what's currently provided in the contract, it would ensure that we're remaining highly competitive with our other agencies and address those recruitment and retention concerns. So the MOU that's before you this evening would raise salary range for officers by 8%, increasing the minimum starting salary from $6,4500 to $70,000, and the max from $110,000 to $118,000. It would accelerate the 7% that's to be provided 10-1 of this year. It would accelerate it earlier, plus provide for an additional 8% for a total of 15. In addition, it would accelerate the 7% for our communications personnel to happen at the same time, and the effective date for this would be beginning this Monday, which is the beginning of the next full, full pay period to be in employees' paychecks, May 24th. The projected total cost is $1.2 million for the upcoming fiscal year, providing an additional $464,000 in this year's budget, which is available, and it would not, we would not need an additional wage increase for the next fiscal year as a result. As a result, our ranking for a police officer salary would put us in line with, basically with the PBSO in, based on what our current labor market data has in terms of collective bargaining, bargaining agreement information that we have currently available. It changes constantly based on that ratification process. So we believe this is very important and timely, and the PBA voted April 12th in favor, 118 to 0, and staff's recommending approval.
Thank you so much, Cheryl. We appreciate that. We don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to close the hearing. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 32, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 32, 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, thank you so much. Let's have a conversation. Anyone have any questions?
I'm the cop on the council, so.
You get to speak first.
You're, we're getting compared to school board? No way. That's where cops go out to pasture when they're done.
There's various reasons why employees are looking elsewhere. Sometimes it's a scheduling matter.
Yeah. That's ridiculous. All right.
Their starting salary prior to this was higher than ours. Their starting salary over this last year, I think it's 68.5. We were 64.5. So we have people going to the school board because they're going for higher pay.
Higher pay, better hours.
And they're off for three months.
Oh, no doubt.
And the sales sent tax. I mean, it's, the, the school board's flush. I mean, that's what they, and they're hiring better people for the situation that they're dealing with today, so I could see it, and we just, we have to elevate because that's what we always do, so.
I, thank you for being proactive with this. I mean, you know, it's really important to keep, you know, our residents safe, so thank you for being proactive, and hopefully this helps with recruitment and retention, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. This is a game changer for us.
Well, let's change it. I'm voting for it.
Vote, okay. All in favor, unless you have any other questions? I don't want to cut anyone off.
You made the motion, so I think you got to support it.
All right, all in favor?
Good point. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's go. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
You can roll.
All right, moving on to Resolution 33, 2024. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 33, 2024, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a request from Florida Power and Light Company, FPNL, for art in public places, AIPP, for Phase 1 and 2 of the PGA Office Center Plan Community Development, PCD. The subject site being located on the southwest corner of Kyoto Gardens Drive and RCA Center Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty, and again, thank you all so much for your patience this evening. We have with us Marty Minor from Urban Design Studios to our podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Once again, for the record, Marty Minor with Urban Design Studios, 610 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach. And I am here representing Florida Power and Light with their public, their art in public places, and you see a rendering of the proposed artwork. We'll get there, and I have a very quick presentation. You all know the site. This is north of PGA, east of Military 95. The artwork will be near the corner of Kyoto Gardens and RCA Center Drive, so it would allow multiple, you know, maximum visibility and still keep it on the site. This is where it is on the site plan. There is a master plan for the site. Two of the buildings have been approved. The first one has been constructed, but the second one has been approved. And here are some renderings. You may have seen this with Phase 1, which is existing. Phase 2 is in the future. This is looking east and looking towards the west. And while we're here, the city has an art and public places requirement. This is to meet that requirement, and we are fortunate here because we're using both the funds generated from Building 1 and Building 2. And we're fortunate enough today to have the artist here, Mr. Dan Shaughnessy IV from Chicago, educated there, was a part of the, twice in a row, you know, the youngest, the first artist to be selected twice for the Chicago Sculpture Exhibit. Of course, you've been gone there. It's a very big sculpture town. And locally, Dan designed and created the blooms you see in downtown The Gardens. Beautiful piece of work that was designated, awarded the LIT Lighting Design Award, which is fairly prestigious in the system. Some of the inspiration, the existing building, the flowers in the area, and we've used that to create the artworks, Solaris. Solaris will have blossoms at 23, 17, and 14 feet in height. They have programmable colors, and is surround, go in there, little bit more, marine-grade steel protection from the elements. There's 128 little lights on each of these blooms, and you see the primary colors and the colors that are options for this. And during the daytime, it's a polished steel, so it will reflect sunlight. It's, it's really an amazing kind of piece of work. For the landscape around it, to, to disencourage anyone from getting For the landscaping around it, to, to disencourage anyone from getting too close and trying to climb the sculpture, we've planted agave, yucca plants, or some croons, just to discourage such activities. And very quickly, I rushed through the, if you have any questions, I also, along with the artist, Dan, I have John Rosenthal with FPNL as the project manager. If you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
No, ma'am. Staff recommends approval. The Art in Public Places Board also unanimously voted in approval.
I can see why. All right, let's, let's go ahead. We don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to close the hearing. I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve Resolution 33, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 34, 2024.
No.
33.
Sorry, I'm trying to get out of here. Resolution 33, 2024, I'll make.
I'll second.
Sorry about that.
Thank you all. Let's, let's chat about this. I see, Bert, you got your microphone ready to go.
I don't know, I just think it's the coolest thing. I'm not an art guy at all, but I look at that thing, and I go, that is really special. And I like how you have kind of the barrier around it, so nobody really could tamper. You have lighting coming up, I would assume, around it as well. I mean, I just, that is so awesome, and man, I can't wait to see this thing.
It's going to be amazing, not only the sculpture itself, but the location and the site. FPL's done a really great job of creating this amazing landscape situation that'll really invite the community.
Is it on? No. We heard you, but I just go to the record. Yeah, but congratulations. It's really spectacular. And AIPP, I mean, those guys are tough somewhat, so if they looked at it and approved it, I know it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful addition to the city. So congratulations.
I can go, I guess, after that. I am absolutely in love with this. It's my mom's favorite flower, the sunflower, so I appreciate it even more because of that. And if I could afford it, which I cannot, I would love to have this in my backyard.
Just to let you know, it's a hybrid. It's actually a hybrid of a sunflower and a yellow milquetoat, which is, you know.
Yeah, I read that, and it's awesome, absolutely awesome. And I'm going to change my direction of travel just to pass by this particular piece of art. So thank you so much for creating it.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, honestly, we're so lucky to have an artist like Dan coming to our city. I'm a, I'm a huge fan of The Blooms. They're iconic. I can't see that many headshots around town these days without it in the background. So we've all kind of taken it as our own and adopted it, and it's a, it's a real beacon for our city. And I'm also thrilled with FPNL. Thank you so much for thinking of this, putting it right there on your property, and providing the energy for it with solar power. So it's, again, this is truly a reflection of our city. It's beautiful, it's innovative, it's environmentally sensitive, and it's also about making sure that the services provided by FPNL are not just extraordinary, which we appreciate, but pretty to look at as well. So thank you all so much. And with that, let's vote on Resolution 33. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Better not be. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And thanks again for your patience tonight.
And thanks for not cashing out.
All right, next we have Resolution 34. Again, thank you for your patience. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 34, 2024, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a request from the Palm Beach County Tax Collector for Art in Public Places, AIPP, the Palm Beach County Tax Collector Plan Unit Development, PUD, being located at the southeast corner of PGA Boulevard and Gardens Mall Road, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. We have Hampton Peterson, Palm Beach County Tax Collector, and Urban Design, oh, go for it, and, oh, we have, hi, Anne Gannon. Thank you so much for waiting this evening.
That was very interesting. I love those young people. You know, it's the prayer we all have, that we're going to move forward in our country, and they give you hope.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, it was, it was very interesting. And I'm Anne Gannon, the Palm Beach County Tax Collector. I've been tax collector for 14 years, and I love my job, and we are so happy to present our building to your city. And I hope each of you had an opportunity to come in the building. It's, it's, yeah, it's really a beautiful building. We think it's the best building. And I want to thank FPNL, in case you all don't know, they're the number one taxpayer in Palm Beach County. So they're going to stay number one for a long time. And now I'd like to introduce my general counsel, Hampton Peterson. And also, to make you understand why this mural is so important, our employees participated in choosing the artist and actually choosing the art, so it was really important for them. So Hampton, go for it.
Thank you.
No, no, I'll sit back.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Hampton Peterson, General Counsel and Director of Facilities. I would just like to go over, this is what the south-facing wall of our new building presently looks like. It's really a blank canvas, and that was one of the reasons why we thought, let's do something amazing and have that entire wall art. And that's the mural. It runs the entire length of the back of the building. That is where all the parking is for the building. Plus, it is a cut through for people from the courthouse to get out onto PGA from, instead of taking some of the other routes. We anticipate that to be a vision for people as they come in, calming the colors, the combination of both organic and abstract geometric forms. Our artist, who's here, Ben Heller, he viewed this as a vibrant display, inviting you to immerse yourself into the abstract forms and the dynamic colors. He hopes that people seeing this turn the routine into a delightful journey of exploration. Ben grew up in Connecticut, but he has been in South Florida for quite a while, sort of fell into art, and I think he can give you a little bit more of his background, if you would like. Ben?
Good evening. Thank you for the time for letting us speak and present for you. Yeah, as he said, I basically fell into this. I randomly was speaking with the gallery owner when I was visiting, or in town for a wedding, and was showing him some of my work, and he said that he would carry my work. And then that kind of sparked this idea of potentially actually pursuing art as a career. I was never even pushed in that direction, even though I've been drawing and painting my whole life. And ever since that day, I went at it full force, and I pursued it for about five years while I was at my other job, and then made the jump a few years ago, and been nonstop. Thank you.
And a lot of Ben's art has been, as you can see, murals, Fort Lauderdale, Boca Raton, Boynton Beach, the Delray Place Plaza, rather, Rock Urban. He's exhibited in Art Basel. He has a lot of experience, and we loved the way he came up with the use of color, and something that didn't look graffiti-ish for the wall. Something that had a lot of vibrant colors and really showed off that area. We do have a lighting plan. It will run the entire length of that south wall. There are, there are plants that are there. They will have some shadows that are thrown. However, Ben agrees that the shadows add interest to the actual artwork at night. He's within budget. Actually, he was over budget, but he said he'd do it for budget, which was very nice of him. And we anticipate it will take approximately two weeks, once approval is made, to have the artwork done. And he's ready to get started right now. Or so he told me tonight. And that's what we have. And we're really looking forward to, to being able to add this artwork to the city. We did have approval from the Art in Public Places Board, unanimous, and staff also approves.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
No, Madam Mayor, staff recommends approval.
All right, lovely. Thank you so much. We don't have any comment cards, so let's close the hearing. I'd love a motion in a second to approve Resolution 34, 2024, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 34, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second.
Great, so let's chat. Anyone have any comments, questions, or otherwise?
The only comments I have is I love the definition of the vibrant colors to have a calming effect before you come in and pay your tax. That is a beautiful line. Or take your driving test. Yeah, that's fantastic. So, no, I think it's great. So thank you for coming tonight, and good luck with everything. We look forward to seeing it in a month or so.
Walk in with a smile and leave broke. I drive, I have a tendency to drive around our city a lot, so if I come, walk in and check on you guys while you're painting, remember this face. Don't tackle me. I'll be there just to see how it's going. Because I love, I love that stuff.
We're planning on setting up a camera to do photos as it goes along, to do a time lapse.
It's going to be fun.
Yeah.
You're doing, nice work. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.